The November addition of the City of St. Charles School Board Meeting. This, one of the things I want to say, tonight is actually an important night for us because this is the night that we talk about student achievement in depth, and that's really what we're all about, right, is student achievement. So, you know, half jokingly, after the public recognitions and all that fun stuff, you know, I say things like, you know, if you don't have anything else better to do, you can stay, but if you want to go home and all that. But, you know, it's going to be a long meeting, but if you have the time and if you have the interest, we're going to be showing up on the screen how our schools are doing. And it's an important thing. So, obviously, nobody has to stay, but it's significant. It's significant. So, I want to thank you all for being here. Love seeing some familiar faces. I am a little bit more familiar with some of our St. Charles West people that I've seen plenty of times over the fall, but welcome to our Coverdale folks as well. So, we will begin, as we always do, by rising and stating the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, and we'll have Dr. Seifert give his superintendent's summary and comments, please.
Good evening to the Chiefs and the Warriors.
There you go.
That's a complete and strong response from the Rock.
Kudos right there, some points. I have a couple of highlights for us. First of all, last month, we were able to do a board tour on a Friday and had a chance to, we got to every single building, so all 13, actually 14 buildings, including maintenance and Transportation Department, and got a chance to get out and see all the great things that are happening in our school district. And one thing that I would like to say about that day was, it was just, you guys know I'm all in on our Big Rocks.
RTI and student needs. And that day specifically, our board got to see those two rocks live in action, fully going on in our school district, and they're shaking their head yes.
Yep, we did.
There's all specific examples of that.
And that's what's awesome.
Because great things are happening in our schools with our students and staff, and it all has to do with our Big Rocks.
Response to intervention and also our student needs. So, kudos to our staff. It was a great day for our board.
Speaking of great time, how about the Care to Work Gala? You can clap for that.
Dr. Vogel, did you have fun out there? Would you say that maybe St. Charles West had the most staff there? Would you say that?
Maybe.
Maybe?
I wouldn't say maybe.
We had a full table. Oh, here we go.
St. Charles West not only had multiple tables, but also multiple bouncy chairs.
Oh, bounce. Oh.
Okay, settle down, Mr. Hallam. Over $85,000 raised for our kids, and that money goes directly into kids. You clapping for that, Dr. Vogel?
Sorry, Dr. Vogel's name.
Mr. Hallam.
Soon-to-be Dr. Hallam, when is that happening?
December.
December. This is the end of the process tonight. I love this. And then also, another great thing we got to see was the CAPS Roadshow. So, we got to go see, and you were able to do the morning session, a couple of us were able to do the PM session, and we got to see our kids in action in the health strand, entrepreneur strand, and then the other strand that we didn't get to was global businesses. We needed to see it. So, CAPS program is doing some great things for our kids. Our outstanding senior night, obviously, was canceled.
We rescheduled for next Tuesday. Yes, we've already been in the snow, but we're not going to talk about it. No. That is not fun for a superintendent.
Down the road, Kelly, stop yelling woo.
3:30 in the morning is my job, but we made the right call that day, but unfortunately, we haven't scheduled a senior night. Now, listen, if you're a senior, just make sure we all know this. We actually had to move it to the St. Charles High because of the conflict with the auditorium, so we'll be there, St. Charles.
It's high, same program, next Tuesday. We're looking forward to that.
We just, yes?
Tuesday.
Is it next Wednesday?
No, Tuesday.
You said it was the 20th.
No, it's the 19th.
19th, sorry.
You're, I don't want to correct one of my bosses, but don't get people confused. Okay. Speaking of APR, we're really looking forward to having a time tonight to really look at our APR score and look at our student achievements, and we're excited about that.
And I can just tell you that each building, leadership team, our admin team, are looking at their school improvement plans with our data.
What can we do specifically with our Big Rocks to make sure we're moving our case forward with grocery?
So, it's exciting about that process. Don't forget, many talk podcasts this month. We're going to have a little turkey tip-off conversation.
So, we've invited all of our high school basketball coaches to come join us, and so that should be a fun conversation with Dr. Lewis and myself. And lots of construction still going on. We're getting ready to finish up our construction projects, and we're going to end with a project that includes Monroe, Jefferson, and St. Charles West, so we're excited about that.
Our fall season coming close. Mr. Jackson's the back, so I'm going to say this, Lily Jackson, second place in cross-country. You clap for that again. And she's, she's second place in cross-country meeting, guess what? She's only a sophomore.
So, I'm hoping, no pressure on Lily, but I'm hoping we're going to get a championship here in the next couple of years. Yes.
I anticipate that, but I also say three times now that she's broken a school record for the latest cross-country. So, three times this year she's broken her own record.
That's awesome. So, we're excited about that. Winter season this year, we've gone, we talked about turkey tip-off, but we also have girls swimming and also wrestling, so we're excited about those sports. I cannot believe we're already in November winter season this year. And just a couple of other notes, Les and I couldn't be with us, and she's our secretary of the board, so she gives a couple of updates. So, on a kind of somber note, and we didn't want to note of the passing of the St. Charles High alum, alumni, Stefan Abram, and his visitation actually is tomorrow evening from 4:00 a.m. off of the rivers. And so, just wanted to give a second there to just recognize Stefan. He was a great young man and will be great in this. We have a teen drug summit coming up that the whole county comes together for, and always participates and is a leader in that. And then also, Les and I said that she would like to encourage everyone, once again, to sign up for Twitter and download the district app. We'll obviously have Twitter accounts and make sure that we get just that great message out of all the things that are happening in our school district, because great things are happening, and it's because of people that are sitting out there tonight. So, thanks, everybody.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Seifert. Item 3.04, Board Communications. We have had one communication, came from now former board member, Mr. Virgil Beer. He did off-tender his resignation, and the board did accept that resignation. The board has not decided yet how and if we are going to fill that space before the coming elections. But what I also want to use this board communication for is our chance to maybe share a little bit particularly about the board tour. And I probably didn't warn Marita or Donna about that, but I guess I'll start. So, I, for one, really enjoyed, and this was our, I think, third year doing it, and just really appreciate everybody welcoming us into the schools and letting us see what's going on. And I purposefully, when I talk to Jason, I say, you know what? I don't want the dog and pony show. I don't need a presentation. We just want to see what's going on, see what all of you are doing just day to day. And he's right, you know, we did get to see, we did get to see the, you know, student needs, response to intervention. It was really impactful to me at Monroe, actually, because their instructional coaches sat us down and they showed us the plans that they were making for, really, they had post-its with individual student names and seeing exactly. And, you know, for me, not being an educator, it really helped me see what is this about and how are we helping individual students, not treating everybody as the same. So, very encouraged, and I know that that's not the only school that's doing that, but being able to see that kind of an action was inspiring to me. Donna or Marita?
One of the things I really love about giving to all the schools is, yes, all of our teachers, our staff, everyone knows their kids. So, while we are gathering data and they're keeping track of scores and post-its and things, those kids are getting hugs. They're running up to you, and you're getting hugs, and there's lots and lots of support and love in those buildings. So, yes, we're about academics, and we're going to hear about that and how we do, but I'm still loving this district for how our kids feel. I think they feel the warmth and the support, and it's because of our students and our parents and our staff. So, I hope so.
All right, thank you. Marita, any?
Yes. Also, when I went to, with, I went to Monroe, I found that very interesting because I was totally clueless how this RTI was going to work. And I was a little bit concerned that was one more thing that we would have to do, you know, as a school district. And by the time I was finished, and the Monroe teachers explained it to me, it made a lot of sense. In fact, I brought it along with me, in case anybody wants to know how it works. But that was one thing that I thought was really important. And the other thing is, if you haven't been to Coverdale for a while, you're going to get lost. You know? So, I hope that Coverdale enjoys their new school for all intents purposes.
Yeah. It's beautiful. It really is, yeah.
And then the other thing that I thought was interesting, although it was not their intent to show this to us, Donna and I got to see the basement of Lincoln School. If you have never seen the basement, there's a door down there that is just most impressive.
Original timbers, original.
Yeah. But then on the other side of that, though, it is interesting, the old library and the windows that are being saved in there, and it's just really, it's a gorgeous building. And so, that was very interesting, and it's nice that we try to preserve much of the history as we can in St. Charles, which is important to me.
I just wanted to add one more thing to it on this tour, which was another happenstance as we were at the Transportation Building. Suddenly, a call comes in that a student didn't get, wasn't on the bus, was on, remember the call that came in? And it was just being handled. Jason was on the phone and finding out where, and we had principals, we had, within, what, five minutes, they knew where he was, and it was all handled. Why were we still?
And the student was safe.
Tool must have gone.
Yeah, and the tool went on.
Yeah.
And also, the printing room, I thought, was very impressive. I couldn't believe that printing room.
All the little things that we don't think about.
Yeah, if you haven't been there, you ought to check that place out.
The print shop.
Quick information.
The print shop was here downstairs.
Slightly better than the basement here.
There you go.
It is now, 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 now out in the maintenance, and it's a really nice space. And it's just easier for us to get it out of there and so.
A clean, well-lit place.
Yes, very well lit. All right. Well, excellent. So, thank you. Thank you all for humoring us. We appreciate it. But again, I really, I look forward to that tour every year. It's just, it's so fun to get out into the schools. So, again, thank you all for having us. All right. Item 3.05, Public Recognitions. Dr. Towers?
As many of you know, the open session of our board meeting is televised. The next portion of our open meeting will consist of public recognition. Through participation in the public recognition portion of our meeting, all parties give consent to the televised broadcast of information and images, as well as other district-related media. If you prefer not to participate, you have that option.
So, tonight, we have two schools that we'll be recognizing, and so we're going to start with Coverdale Elementary, and I'd like to invite up Mr. Chris Hallam, principal.
Thank you, guys. I just want to take a minute to thank the board for having us, CO staff. It's, this is the first time for me as principal of a school. I've been an assistant the last time I was here, and so I was sitting in my office today, sweating a little bit, like, I can't remember what it's like, but it really is an honor to be here with you this evening, to be able to recognize these fine folks. When I was thinking about who to bring up here, I said, we're going to fill half the room tonight, because so much of what you're going to hear in just a second about the great things that are happening in Coverdale is because of the folks that are sitting here and working alongside me every day. So, I wrote some notes. I generally like to kind of wing these things, but it being my first time, I really want to try to avoid floundering. And so, I'm going to, if you could oblige me, I'm going to reference these and give you some context as to why the folks in this room are here tonight, and then I'll introduce them and get more personal about that. So, as I started to kind of process through who to recognize here tonight, I kind of found myself reflecting on the journey that Coverdale's been on for the last 14 months since I've been with them. To say that we faced some adversity over the last couple of months, over the last year, would be an understatement. We are very, very thankful for this new building that we are about to move into a week from tomorrow. The finish line is very, very much in sight. The process to getting there has required much patience and perseverance on part of the staff. In fact, I remember as an assistant principal at another school in the district, sitting in an admin meeting when they were talking about the process to getting Coverdale to where it is today, and I remember thinking, man, I'm really glad that I don't have to deal with that. Little did we know, little did we know, that last year in the fall, I would be at Coverdale and appointed in December. Last story, I tell this story often, but at the December board meeting last year, I was sitting in my room, my bedroom here on Elm Street, and it's 9:00 in the evening, and my, I have four daughters, my second oldest daughter came upstairs, and she said, Dad. I said, yeah. She said, Dr. Seifert's at the door. And I said, oh, man, it's boring. I'm like, this could either be really good or this could be really bad, right? And so, I come downstairs, and sure enough, Dr. Seifert was there with Dr. Lewis and our board president, Mr. Josh Keen, and they came in and said, you're going to be at Coverdale. And since that point, first of all, I feel very grateful. I feel very grateful that you even trusted me with the building. And so, as I was sitting through and thinking at that point, where do we want to go? Where do we want to head? A few things came to mind, and conversations with teachers, just informally, two things, you know, started to kind of spark. It was, one, what are we going to do to help our students that have great need? And then, two, how can we be very intentional in the way we're intervening academically? I was very fortunate that that is where the district is headed as well, but in that, two things came to mind, and there are two groups here tonight that I'd like to recognize for their help in the process with meeting student needs and then helping with our academic process. So, I'd like to invite up our PBIS team first. So, this team, and there's a lot of them, which is, yeah, there's a lot of them, and I can, I can help you out. I think I'll bring them all at once, we can just read them at the end. So, this is the first group that I'd like to recognize tonight. Now, for those of you that don't know what PBIS is, PBIS stands for Positive Behavioral Interventions and Support. And it's really a philosophy and a framework that relies on proactive, positive strategies to kind of stop behaviors before they start. It really takes the idea that with the kids coming in our building, they will really benefit from us teaching what we expect in our building versus going a more punitive route like some of us were used to growing up. It's no secret that many of our students come to us with great need. This program seeks to put systems in place to help meet the needs of these students. This team, this team specifically in front of you, was charged with building our initial Tier One or universal systems of supports. What that means is the work that these folks did was intended to meet the behavioral needs of all students in the building. This process normally takes a building one year to implement. So, if you're going to implement this in your school in August, you need to start prepping the August prior. These guys met for the first time in March, and we rolled it out in August of this year. So, in short, these guys did five months, I'm sorry, 12 months' worth of work in five months, two of those months being summer months where they worked tirelessly, even though they didn't have to, and I'm so proud of them for that. Some of the things that they've done is they created a universal matrix for all of our kids and our teachers to know that kind of defines the expectations for every area in the building. They want to step beyond and created posters that are hung in all areas of the building that have common language on them that teaches our kids what we expect of them in those areas, and every teacher that delivers that instruction uses the same language, which is helpful to our kids. They've created lessons for classrooms to instruct our kids on what it looks like to be a good citizen of Coverdale. These lessons are taught every single day from 8:05 to 8:25. They organized a ticket economy to help our kids know what our expectations are, and then they've incentivized these tickets by having it where the more kids collect, they can work towards whole-school rewards. They've created a data collecting system that helps us record minor behavioral infractions, which lets us see areas of the building where we're struggling the most, which then in turn allows us to really pinpoint what lessons that we need to instruct on. These are just a few of the things that this team has worked on, and it's because of their work that we are seeing tangible improvement in our kids, and there's improvement in the staff for their ability to meet the needs of our kids. So, I want to tell you guys, I'm so thankful for you, and I'm so proud of you, and I'm so happy that I get to work alongside you, because I think we're doing amazing work. And so, we have Kelly Wilkinson, Molly Lindquist, Amy Almas, Tina Franklin, Julie Drier, Amanda Stevenson, Gina Clagus, Kelly Andrews, Michelle Taggart, Lisa Graham, and Kim Elder, and I think Hallie is the only one that we're missing tonight, and our counselor, Hallie Irmer, who couldn't be here with us tonight. So, thank you, guys. Yes. So, I have one more group that I would like to bring up with you that helped me tremendously in addressing some of our academic needs in the building. I find it not ironic that we heard a lot about what the RTI process was in the board comments. We are trying to implement that at the building level. And so, this group of people have been instrumental in helping us get our RTI processes in place. So, I'd like to bring them up now. We have Marissa Cooper, Lauren Payne, Sharice Lux, Leslie Spears, and also Kim Elder helping us out tonight. So, the beginning of these structures were born during that April PD Day where the whole staff gets to attend things that interest them, when kind of the godfather of RTI, Mike Maddow, was presented. And it was during this presentation that we realized we had some things that we could work on to help best deliver instruction to our kids and how we could structure our intervention time to meet the needs of our students. The first piece was to ensure that the schedule was set up in a way that allowed for all of our students to have access to essential grade-level curriculum. And as we sat down to start crafting the schedule, this team was super intentional about making sure that all the students would have access to a designated intervention time outside of the core instructional time. They also worked to create documents and forms which now guide our data teams, and these forms have allowed us to focus much of our information on each student. It lets us know them at a deeper level, which then allows us to get very specific on skills that they're lacking, so we can efficiently and appropriately intervene. This team has helped us tremendously in identifying grade-level essentials in reading in each grade level, in each grade level, and they, this, these essential standards help focus our interventions towards these essentials. The systematic approach has let us focus on problem-solving teams to make sure kids who need extra support aren't falling through the cracks. Like the PBIS team, this team also worked tirelessly over the summer, so we were ready to roll this out in August. So, to you, I could not have done this without you either, and I'm so thankful for you and the work we're doing, and I'm excited just by the conversations we're having in our meetings and how we're able, like Monroe, to talk about each kid individually, to know where they struggle, to know them on a personal level, so we can help them better, and that's because of your work. So, thank you very much. So, I have one last thing, then I'm done, I promise. But we've heard the term, right, it takes a village. I believe that this brief statement right now proves that Coverdale has focused its work under that philosophy. Individually, this work was so extensive, and it was so thorough, that it would not be possible for one purpose, one person to accomplish in the short amount of time. But because of the collective efforts of you, much has been done in a short time. While it's true we'll continue to monitor and tweak what we do, you guys have given us an amazing foundation on which to build. So, I'm so proud to be with you. I feel fortunate to be your principal, and I'm thankful that I get to work alongside you guys every day. So, thank you so much for being here tonight and letting us do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hallam. So, Chris and everybody else would like to have a group photo. So, we're going to have you kind of scooch in. We're going to have Mr. Hallam pop in.
That was surprisingly smooth.
Good teachers. I don't know how to take a photo.
All right. Now, before you sit down, the board and administration would like to thank you for all that you do for our students and for Coverdale and for our school community. So, if somebody would like to start over here with Kelly, and just take you around. Oh, and tomorrow is Mr. Hallam's 40th birthday, so we should definitely celebrate that. That's exciting.
Thank you so much. Very nice. Thank you.
I guess I'm a little bit, I'll leave them off. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your help. Almost over. Hang on. Hang on. Thank you. I like your shirt. Yeah. Wow. You guys look like you came to the same cookie cutter.
I know.
Yeah. Nice going. Very nice going. Yeah.
Let's give another round of applause for Coverdale. That was pretty awesome. And so, now, we're going to invite up Dr. Scott Vogel, principal of St. Charles West.
Thank you very much. Thank you as well to the board for the opportunity to take part in the recognitions tonight. I was not necessarily able to sit and sweat over this due to the day that Dr. Seifert and I had. However, like soon-to-be Dr. Hallam, I figured we might as well just fill half the room. So, here we are in force. I think Chris may have stolen the introduction to my notes, because I, too, can't operate without notes, and it does take a village. So, we have some recognitions for West from a variety of different aspects of our school community, but along with that, I'll say it's always a good opportunity when you have the time to celebrate that which you really would like to see more of, and I think the people that we have here tonight are a great example of just that. It's a wonderful chance to celebrate individuals who contribute to everything we do at West, but hopefully celebrate that which we want to see more of. So, when I call your name, if you guys would just come on up, and I'll say a few words, and we'll go from there. A few people weren't able to be here tonight, but I would like to recognize them. We'll start with Nicole Busselman. She's feeling a little bit under the weather tonight and was unable to make it, but we wanted to recognize Nicole. Not only does Nicole run the school district's Triumph Academy Program, an alternative education program that serves services students not just from West, but also from St. Charles High School, as well as Harden Middle School, but she really is also an instrumental member of our school community at St. Charles West. She's been a sounding board for many staff members in our building, including myself. She loves the students in her program, but she, she will do anything for any student, especially the students at West. She's stepped up on numerous occasions on short notice to help students in need and in need of staff support, whether it be individual students in a moment of crisis, or really stepping up kind of last minute to help support our cheer program. She continues to look for opportunities throughout our building to build on the positive climate at West and is incredibly, or is an incredibly reliable resource when working through a number of tough issues for us. I cannot tell you how much we appreciate Nicole's support and everything she does for West. So, Nicole Busselman. So, I do believe Ms. Gates, Stacy Gates, come on down. Absolutely, you can clap for that. Steal Dr. Seifert's line. So, if you need to know anything about or at St. Charles West... So if you need to know anything about or at St. Charles West, this is probably your first go-to, or at least should be. It really should. You guys could, right? Stacy wears so many hats at West, I don't think I really can remember them all, but I'm just going to throw out a few. She's our librarian and media specialist, right? Right? She's our AP coordinator. She sponsors our game enthusiast club. She's one of our student council sponsors. She's a member of our school leadership council, our leadership team. She is the resident tutor on all things ranging from pre-algebra, literature, history, anything science, pretty much all the way up through physics and anything in between. I'm pretty sure that if it's a class that we offer, if given the opportunity or asked to do so, Stacy could probably teach it. And if not, give her a few days, and she probably would be able to. She's regularly one of, if not the last person in the building after a long school day, keeping the library open to service our students who might need additional support and time to study. She's also, at times, a pseudo-instructional coach, helping our staff incorporate more strategies to really improve literacy throughout our building. So, she really is one of a kind and does so much for our building, so thank you very much. Stephanie is a newer member at St. Charles West, newer member to our school community, but she has jumped right in and really honestly taken a veteran role. She's a valued member of our mathematics department, also, you know, really kind of taking the reins on our PLC process, and regularly, you know, helping in a number of ways, study hours after school, you name it. But I also want to talk about her role on our leadership. As you know, our two big rocks are RTI and student needs. Our leadership team, going back to last year, spent a significant amount of time looking at the structures around our academic intervention period, and really trying to examine how we could revamp that to better meet the needs of students needing intervention, as well as our teachers needing to work with students for a variety of different needs. We came up with a great system, right? We honestly probably took a little over a semester, came up with a great system addressing the need to really look at priority, balancing teacher needs, as well as looking at how we could systematically reach all of our students throughout the week. But we really got stuck on the administrative piece. We didn't know how we were going to keep track of the fluid nature of scheduling students to different locations on a day-to-day basis. And that's where Ms. Lake and her expertise came in, because she said, "I've got some ideas. We could potentially use Google and all of the wonders that come with that, and really create a system that would help us do just that fairly easily." So in a night, and I mean literally a night, Stephanie went home and put together a system that probably would have taken me about six months to put together, if I was able to put it together at all. And then along with that, Stephanie kind of took charge and coordinated training for both staff, as well as students, in using the technology that we are now using to better coordinate our AIP structures, that will now really ultimately provide us the structure to allow us to better meet the needs of everybody involved in the process, especially our Tier Two and Tier Three learners as we move down this road of RTI. So, thank you very much. Mr. Jeremy Jackson. Jeremy has been a key contributor to our STEM initiative over the last few years, specifically in the creation and renovation of our STEM lab area, along with his students, who I believe he has invited a few here tonight, Zane Scott and Zach Mays, correct? You guys can come on down, too. We're going to call a little bit of an audible, absolutely. We're going to call a little bit of an audible here, because Jeremy had asked me, after we kind of turned everything in, if he could invite a couple of students, because he really does. Everything he does is with and/or for the students in his classes. So I said, "Absolutely, no problem. Invite who you would like, and we'll go ahead and take care of your certificates after the fact." So I'll deliver those to you guys at school probably in the next few days, okay? But along with his students, Jeremy created plans for the creation of what basically amounts to a STEM wing in our school, not just necessarily a STEM lab. His efforts have ultimately helped to plan and create three rooms conjoined together that will meet any STEM lab need or want that you might have. His efforts have resulted, or their efforts, excuse me, have resulted in the awarding of a $10,000 grant from America's Farmers, that is being used to support a variety of STEM initiatives, not just in his classes, but cross-curricularly as well. His students can be found running our Warrior Vision programs, building battle bots and robotics, flying drones, and now building and running a self-sustaining ecosystem with an aquaponics garden. Jeremy and his students, their efforts not only support those classes, but also provide opportunities for students studying chemistry and environmental science as well. This type of passion for innovation is just a small example of what makes Mr. Jackson such a valued member of our family at St. Charles West. Jeremy, did you want to say anything?
Well, Zach and Zane are both in my Advanced Robotics Class, which they're doing a lot with technology. Zach is one of our lead programmers, and has done a whole lot in setting up our aquaponics system. And Zane is one of the heads of our media team, taking care of our website, putting out updated videos of our teams got going on. So, these guys have been an integral part of what we're doing in St. Charles West.
Awesome. And then we'd also like to recognize Mrs. Yolanda Curry and Mr. Nick Saubers. Mr. Nick Saubers couldn't be here tonight because he has some activities with the play going on and wasn't able to make it. So, earlier this year, I approached Mrs. Curry with a program that I thought might be beneficial to St. Charles West, one that I just simply wanted to explore. It was called Start With Hello. This program comes from the Sandy Hook Promise Initiative, and is designed to promote inclusivity in the nation's schools while helping to build connections, and in turn, hopefully decreasing instances of bullying and/or harassment and isolation. Right away, Mrs. Curry, who is in her first year as a guidance counselor at West, ran with the idea. She also knew that simultaneously, Mr. Saubers and his all students, or students in our Advanced Leadership Lab, were working to create activities focused on similar goals. And so at that point, their collaboration began. So thank you to both of them for their efforts in working with our students to build what will hopefully be a positive initiative at West for years to come, which leads me to our all students. So the following students are members of our Advanced Leadership Lab, and are the students we would like to recognize for their participation and contribution with the Start With Hello initiative at St. Charles West. So, if you guys would come on down when I call your name. Elizabeth Banga. Samuel Claudfelder. Alexander Dollar. William Hallgren. Camia Lee, I don't believe is here tonight. Noah Meyer. Emily Richardson. Tyler Robnett. And Emily Schneider. So these students helped to create the first-ever Warrior Welcome Team, which is a body of students who have volunteered to be a buddy to new students who've transferred into St. Charles West. The all-members created a platform using Google Forms that will enable the St. Charles West Counseling Department to pair new students with members of our Warrior Welcome Team, based on criteria such as similar interests, common lunch schedules, et cetera. Once paired with these new students, Welcome Warriors will conduct a tour for them and accompany those students to lunch, thus making the transition to St. Charles West a little bit easier for all of our new students. During the Start With Hello Week, our all-students recruited approximately 44 other students for the Welcome Warrior Team. They also created banners for clubs to use to greet students every morning during our Start With Hello Week, and passed out candy to share during lunches, encouraging students to make someone else's day a little bit brighter by simply sharing a piece of candy or sharing a kind word. We're excited by the commitment that these students have shown to the Start With Hello Week initiative. We're also proud of the work that they have done to take a component of this one-week initiative, the Welcome Warrior Team, and integrate it into the St. Charles West culture, making it a sustainable intervention that we hope, and we think, will enhance our school community for years to come. Thank you, guys. So where Dr. Hollum is correct, soon-to-be Dr. Hollum is correct, it does take a village. And here you have just a small picture of the village that we have at St. Charles West, really working to make it a better place each and every day. So thank you, guys, very much. It's a pleasure to work with you, guys.
And also adding to the village, right? It does take a village, and we have some very amazing young men and women up here, and I know they have some very proud family members, too.
Absolutely.
So, if you'd like to stand for a round of applause, because we know they couldn't be who they are without your support, too. So with that, Chris would really like to have a group photo. So I don't know, Coverdell set the bar pretty high on figuring this out, so I'm going to have Dr. Vocal hop in there.
Come on in.
Parents, did you get your shots? Does anybody need one? Stay where you are.
Oh, one more.
All right, awesome. Okay, before you go down, oh, you don't get off that easy. Our Board and Administration would like to recognize you personally for your contributions to St. Charles West and the district. So Ms. Lake, would you mind taking everybody around the dais?
Thanks for all you're doing for our kids. Thanks, Dixie, for everything. Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. Thanks for all you're doing. Thanks, Ms. Curry. Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. Thanks for all you're doing. Thanks for all you're doing. Thank you. Thanks for all you're doing. Thanks, Jeremy. Vocal, I may have to put this in your evaluation.
All right.
I'm sure he has.
So yes, thank you, and just for the great things that both schools do, just thank you. These public recognitions, these are the fun part of what we do every month. So, really glad to see everybody. I don't have any cards. Kelly, we didn't get any comment cards, right? Okay. So, at this point, we are going to pause for about five minutes. If you do have something else to do, completely understand if you want to stay. There's plenty more to come, but we'll pause for about five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Congratulations.
So Jessica, here to Jeremy.
Yes. Oh, I love it. That's great. Thank you. Oh, cool. Yeah. That would be good for us. Yes. Just never works out.
I put the baby on my back.
I'm back in business.
My oldest son's girlfriend.
Uh-uh. What?
Oh. She's 28.
I said one last pitch ever.
Yeah.
He's off to Disney this weekend, so he'll come back in a few weeks.
There you go. He'll be in a happier mood, magical place. He'll think of something else.
It was funny though, because I was like, "I don't want to interrupt this."
Yeah, yeah.
And Derek was in there.
So I hope this falls down over.
Yes.
And we can do lunch.
I would love that.
That's what he was telling me, is you can either have them leveled to the ceiling or to the floor, but not both. That sounds about right.
The river is 94.
Take care. I'm so glad you got to see your daughter get recognized. She's pretty awesome.
No, that's my guy's Jeep. My car's still in the shop from being broken into.
Was there damage to the Jeep?
No. He's got this big grill on the front, and so I whacked the tail end of it with the right side of the car, and I was like, "Oh, God." And it darted off, and so I don't know if it, I didn't. So I stopped, pulled over, and I looked. I don't think there's any damage, and I called him immediately. I said, "I'm freaking out." And he's like, "Oh, it's not the first time it's hit a deer." I'm like, "Okay."
I'm glad you're okay. That would have freaked me out.
I know. No. It was a boom. But it kept going. Yeah.
I'm going to go grab a clip here. I shouldn't. I'm going to.
Do it.
Do it, do it, do it.
And then there were few. The loyal. We appreciate you all being here. Yes. Thank you. Even if you're a student and have to be here for college. We get it. We appreciate it. All right. Are we ready to?
I would love that.
That's what he was telling me, is you can either have them leveled to the ceiling or to the floor, but not both. That sounds about right.
Take care. I'm so glad you got to see your daughter get recognized. She's pretty awesome.
No, that's my guy's Jeep. My car's still in the shop from being broken into. So.
Was there damage to the Jeep?
No, he's got this big grill on the front. And so I whacked the tail end of it with the right side of the car. And I was like, oh, God, and it darted off. So I don't know if it, I didn't. So I stopped, pulled over, and I looked. I don't think there's any damage. And I called him immediately, I said, I'm freaking out. And he's like, oh, it's not the first time it's hit a deer. I'm like, okay.
I'm glad you're okay. That would've freaked me out.
I know, no. It was a, it was a boom. But it kept going. Yeah.
And then there were few. The loyal. We appreciate you all being here. Yes. Thank you. Even if you're a student and have to be here for college. We get it, we appreciate it. All right, are we ready to continue on? All right, let's go ahead and move to 3.07. May I have a motion to amend or adopt the agenda, please?
I move to readop the agenda.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Consent Agenda. For efficiency, the school board utilizes a consent agenda. Items placed on the consent agenda are routine in nature or are among the many decisions that the board has already determined are in the domain of the administration. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, please?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 6.01, Policy Changes. Second reading. I don't think we had too many questions last month about this one. If not, we do need a motion on this one.
I move to readup policy JHC as presented.
All in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. 7.01, Charles.
Yes, this is a, you have in front of you a resolution to refinance some of our bonds from our 2014 bond issue. And our bond underwriter, Lorenzo Boyd from Steefel, is here tonight. Lorenzo, if you'd like to come up, just in case anybody's got any questions. He is, has for a number of years been our advisor on transactions of this sort. And so with his assistance and the assistance of our bond attorneys from Gilmore Bell, you have this resolution that I'd like to ask for your approval on. But Lorenzo, you may wanna just explain exactly what we're doing, real quick.
You know how shy I am, Charles.
Yeah, I know. Poor guy, he'll struggle to find words.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lorenzo Boyd with Steefel. And I must say, I thought everyone was here to see me. Man, they really cleared the crowd when I talk about finance. But as Charles mentioned, today, we refinanced the district's Series 2014 bonds for savings. I think it was a great, this is the first time it's ever happened in my 23-year career, believe it or not, where we sold 6,875,000 of bonds and we received $6,875,000 of orders. So the direct number of bonds that we have received, number of orders. So we're very pleased with that. So today, what we did was we refinanced those bonds. We saved the district approximately $1.7 million, which is huge, as you can know. Almost had one clap. I think it gets a lot of claps. And that comes to about 13% savings over the life of the issue. We're very pleased with the results. And through this process, I just wanted to kinda look back since 2010. We've refinanced four different series of bonds for the school district, saving the school district about $2.8 million for those four series. And we've also done three new money transactions, which produced about $55 million in new projects for the school district. So we're very pleased with those results. We love working with you, guys, and we hope to continue those services. And we ask for your approval. Oh, and then through the same process, we also affirmed the district's underlying rating of AA minus. So there are over 520 school districts in the state of Missouri. 181 have underlying ratings. And that AA minus is in the top 15 of all rated by S&amp;P, of the 181 rated by S&amp;P. So very pleased with that and getting that affirmation of that AA minus rating.
Good job to Charles and his staff, yes. Nicely done.
So with that, we just ask for a resolution and open up to any questions that you may have. I think we're set to close on December 5th.
Yes.
Did you have a question?
Yeah, go right ahead.
I would say, if Marina doesn't have any questions, then.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing direct physicals, salary delivery of general obligation refunding bonds, Series 2019 of the School District of the City of St. Joe, Missouri, providing for the levy and collection of an annual tax for the purpose of paying the principal and interest on said bonds as they become due, and authorizing certain other documents in action in connection with their.
I second.
All in favor?
I think all we had to do was say, I move to approve the resolution. I second it. I second it.
Yeah, Donna seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Lorenzo, thank you so much.
All right, thanks, everyone. Do I get a picture, too? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
We are also preloading payments on that issue. So we'll actually kind of pay a double payment this year and next, which will really, which will also save us some on the end of that bond issue and gives us a little more flexibility the next time we come around to Lorenzo for some bond activity.
Thank you, Lorenzo. All right, item 7.02, Notice of Annual School Election. Who do I turn that one over to? Me?
Sure.
All right, so it is about that time for the next round of school board elections. And this time is going to be interesting and unique. We are going to have three positions that are up for reelection. And now that we have an additional vacancy, that one will be for a single-year term, because that term had only one year left in it. So people who are interested in registering, looks like they will, Kelly, when's, oh, there it is. December 17th through January 21st. And they will have to choose, do they want to run for the three-year or the one-year? You can't, like, go back and forth. You have to.
In case I don't get this.
They have to choose. So that is, that is what is happening. And the election will happen on April 7th, 2020. Any questions, comments, or motions?
How do they choose?
Oh, really? Will they know that ahead of time? Yeah. And so then we'll have two items on the ballot. One for the three-year term and then one for the one-year term.
Yes. Yep.
Do we, is there a time here to discuss, when do we do with the remaining months?
This would probably be the proper time to talk about that, since we're talking about elections.
I would like to bring up the fact that with a vacancy, it's only going to be until next April, that perhaps we might look to maybe a former school board member who's familiar with how the board operates and can step in, and maybe find someone who'd be willing to just be appointed to finish out this year. The December, January, February, March, you know, four months.
What are our options, though? Can we do that? I mean, just pick somebody we like?
We have to vote.
Yeah.
So I think we can. I've had, I've had some discussions with Selinda, our attorney. I would want to just confirm with her before we moved in that direction. But the board policy does give a process. But then it says, or you can appoint someone. Like, one of the very last things, it says, you know, you can do this, or you can do something else.
Now, does the board appoint, or does the superintendent?
The board.
The board.
I was under the impression that there would be a posting, but then you guys would choose that person.
Which is why I would have to double-check with Selinda.
Oh, you can just appoint.
Directly, and that would be the board.
And during my tenure, there was one time, Donna, you might remember this. There was one time that a board member moved out of the district, and this created this vacancy. And we appointed. I think you actually had some interviews, too, didn't you?
Yeah.
Like, it was, there was more than one candidate. So they did post it, they conducted an interview session, and then the board chose.
Yeah, that's the process that's in the policy.
That's the process for posting. And I'm just saying, this, I'm just looking at maybe expedite the process since we want to have someone, maybe for December, January, February, and March, are not bothering, maybe, I don't know. Maybe we can do without anything, but we could appoint someone.
Has anyone shown an interest?
We haven't. I don't think anybody knows that there's a.
Okay.
We formally announced it tonight. So this was the formal announcement in this.
My only thought at that, that's why I said that maybe Josh could contact a former board member who's already familiar with just how things function. And it's not a learning curve for them.
Yeah, I can check with Selinda. I'm wondering, because I figured, no matter what, we would have to do, we'd have to do like a special board meeting. So I wonder if somebody, if there was, no, because we'd have to vote on the person themselves. All right, let me check with Selinda. And then if we need to hold a special board meeting, it would be like a 10-minute board meeting that we could do. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I think the one that we had where we posted and had interviews, it was for almost a full year of, or even, it was quite a long time. Yeah. Yeah, that's right. That's right. So this is only for four months. And that's why I thought maybe.
We had another one that also, that stepped down from her position. And that was, I think, for three months, was it not?
I forgot.
And we did replace her.
I've forgotten which one.
Linda.
Did we replace?
No, we did not.
No, we did not.
Yeah, so we don't have to replace.
That's true, we could stay.
But if, you know, if four more board members would like to replace, then we can certainly move in that direction.
The other thing is, we seem to have, you know, there have been several meetings where we've had just barely a quorum. And then we can't. So I was just thinking, if we had.
Well, let me, and I did, I tried to touch base with Selinda, but I think she was out of the office today. So let me follow up with her. And I will touch base with all of you just through email. And then we can figure out how we wanna go. But we do need a motion, I believe, for this one.
I move to readup the Notice of Annual School Election as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. District food costs. Excuse me, so this was requested, this topic was requested by Leslie Knight. She inquired about how much money the district was spending on food. So Charles did an analysis for us. And that is on the report that you all have. And this, so over 2018, 2019, from administration departments and schools, the total food costs were $70,716. The discussion that we are asked to have tonight is, you know, is that, do we as a board believe something like that is reasonable? Do we think that there should be maybe some other considerations, some other things being looked at? I did tell Leslie that I would inform the board of what her, of what her stance is. So I definitely wanted to read that on her behalf. And let me find it. She's okay with it. Yeah. Yeah, we actually waited for it to be this month. So. Yeah, so she says that, "In regards to food, I think the amount we spend is egregious. I would like to see that money cut at least in half and reallocated to possibly accommodate Care to Learn. I truly think we are feeding the wrong people. That said, I will support whatever the board and district decide." So that's, that's what her, that's what her stance is. So I wanna throw it out.
In support of her, well, halfway in support of what she says, it seems to me, based on what Charles and his crew came up with, we're talking about $1,100,000 of our budget. Is that correct, approximately? Yeah, okay. And that's not a lot of money. But here's the deal, in my mind, and where I think that she would be coming from as well. It's a perception that, you know, we're spending money on things that we perhaps don't need to spend money on. And so, you know, for example, you know, the administration spends $21,000. The Board of Education spends $1,493. If we're going to make cuts, and I'm all for, I'm always looking to make cuts, you know, in the right places. And so my issue, and I think her issue, is why do we spend money on something as small as the school board? You know, getting meals in the evening and so on like that. And, you know, and I think that some of this just cannot be helped. It has a lot to do with morale, you know. And, but I think what we can do, on the other hand, is find out some way in which we can temper how and where we spend the money. Does that make sense? And so that at least we can show the public or the community that we are conscious of this money, you know, that we're spending on food. And we're doing it in a, what's the right word? Responsible way.
Well, and if I might tag onto that, Marina, the other piece of information that you have that I really think is more important than what we spent last year is the administrative procedure to DJF that you also have there, that I was already working on prior to Mrs. Knight bringing up this issue. So part of the issue that I saw internally as I began to look at this, is that we have some principals who are incredibly conservative and rarely provide any kind of food for meetings, and others that feel like we need food at every meeting. And so there's a real unevenness in the way we've approached this issue. So DJF is our primary purchasing policy. And so what you have before you is an administrative procedure that we would just add to that to help principals and directors to make decisions about how to best spend and when to spend if they're gonna provide food for their staff.
And that's really, I really like that idea because, I mean, that's one thing I did notice here, that Knoll's spending $3,400 on food. And we have Harris, or even if you look at Lincoln, $3,100. And when you look at a larger school such as Harris, and how much they're spending on food, $1,700. It's half the price.
Is there a way, and I know it's hard, but, so is that, the procedure that you put together, Charles, is there an estimate? Like, can we say, we think we could save 15%, 20%?
No. I'd be, I'd be very hesitant to give you any kind of an estimate, although I'll tell you that the principals are very concerned that this is going to curtail their activities. So I'm fine, actually, with curtailing their activities somewhat, because there are some loopholes in here. For instance, you all are probably familiar with the things that We Love St. Charles does to support Jefferson. Well, nothing in this policy would keep We Love St. Charles from coming in and blessing our staff with a meal or with a candy bar or whatever else. And the First United Methodist Church does a great job in conjunction with Lincoln, and it wouldn't eliminate that at all. It's just saying, the dollars that belong to us, we want to be more intentional about what we do with them.
This is not, this is not their own building budget. What we used to call it, their co-fund or their.
It would be, this would limit every dollar that's in a supply account or a budget account of any type from the building. Well, so there are, there are some district-wide events where, for instance, there's $3,000 in there that goes into the kickoff breakfast every year that we do for staff, where we're providing donuts and fruit and juice and coffee and all that for staff. So that goes into that number. There are a lot of other things that are born on a district basis that are being paid for on an annual, on an annual, one-time-only type. for on an annual, on an annual, one-time-only type thing, but they're things that we've gotten, frankly, gotten used to. So when I started down this path, I didn't want to say, let's go from what we're doing to nothing. So what are some reasonable things to consider? Is there a business purpose for the meal? Meaning, for instance, at Board of Education, meal during closed session is one of the best examples I can think of, because we're requiring you to work through what would normally be a mealtime. So if we're asking staff to do the same thing, work through their lunch, work through their supper, then it makes sense to provide them with a meal. Otherwise, we've got to consider, okay, is there some other business purpose to this, or is it a celebration? And the celebrations are where then we get into questions like Marita's raised with, what does that look like? Is it required? And so we'd said, I don't want to be the party police and be going around and checking to see what people are doing, but if we give them some guidelines and say, these are the kinds of events that you need to limit and plan for in advance, get approval of, so that your supervisor, which all of the supervisors would be CO team members, so that we would know they're happening, then that gives us an opportunity to help make good decisions across the district.
Well, this, the point you made about not just completely cutting back a certain percentage, but maybe just looking at how it's used, my concern is, as Marita said, mine is on morale. Mine's on morale, kind of a point. We operate, it's only 1% of 1/10 of the budget.
1/10 of 1%.
Every month, when we have a board meeting, and we'll see it again today, our final, we're at 22-point-something percent. If it ain't broke, don't fix it, but I don't mean, I'm not that far over. But I don't want to, I just don't want our buildings, the leadership in those buildings, and then the teachers and staff who benefit from having donuts in the morning, or a meal if they're working through something. I just, I, I'm going to repeat myself, it's just such a morale thing. I'm, I thought I turned off my phone.
Well, here's the good thing about that, for Donna, to your question, this is not a policy, so it's not board-approved. Your policy is DJF, which you have approved, and so this is a procedure. If we find that this is too restrictive, then we can always consider a change. If we find that this isn't restrictive enough, we can always consider a change. And so it gives us the opportunity to try and put some rails, or, you know, use the analogy of a river. It creates banks of the river for us to abide within, and then we can see what happens.
Yeah, it seems to me to make sense to, because is this in practice now? Have you introduced that?
No, I have intentionally delayed it until this discussion.
So, I mean, I, my personal opinion is, let's put that into play, and a year from now, let's have the same discussion and see what effect it's had.
I'm sorry, put what into play?
The procedures.
The procedure.
And the procedures, I don't think we can tell you a percentage at this point, but I can tell you it's going to come back quite a bit, I think. I think Les and I discussed it too, and I think she's concerned that it's not going to come back enough, but I think it's going to cut, even like you were asking Mike about, like the superintendents office, that's not just me spending some dollars, but, like, you know, we do, we spend quite a, we spend quite a few dollars for when we have our kickoff. That's a lot, and then also like our senior recognition, we used to spend, Kelly, how much do we used to spend on senior recognition?
I should clarify, senior recognition's not in there, because it's not staff.
Oh, it's not.
I did take that out.
Okay. 6,000 hours on that, now we've cut that back to cake and punch, but there was a lot of stuff that we used to do for that. And then, I think, we discussed this a little bit about two, three months ago, Mrs. Knight made the comment to kind of just also the administrative meetings and things, and just so you know, like, some of these procedures will... The administrator staff too, like, we, and the procedures, I had to be careful what those procedures look like, because we start our meetings at 7:30 in the morning, we usually, we just do a quick continental form. We have to be very careful what that looks like, the procedure. And then when we do our retreat in the summertime, we usually have a breakfast and then a lunch, because we're working all day. We have to be careful on those things, because some of those might not go into the procedure. So we're going to be cutting back on some of those things. But that's okay, because I want to make sure that we're, you know, we're never, like you said, the perception, right?
Well, there's also a perception that says, we're a cheap district.
You're working through, like you said, I think, and just like you said, opening day, I think that's great, you know, coffee, you know, that's all, I mean, that's...
And new teacher orientation.
But I just don't know, where's this budget going, where was, how much was this 10 years ago?
That's a really good question, Mike, and I don't know the answer to that. And honestly, that's another thing, that just getting these numbers together, that I realize that even as good a job as our building secretaries do in coding things, there are still some of our buildings that are coding to the right function for where they're spending, but it's still hard to decide what event some things are going to. And so we're going to tighten that up a little bit, so that we have a really clear idea that these really are student expenses, staff expenses, what are we doing? Is it community expense, where's it going?
I do think this is a good conversation. And I do think that the procedures that Charles has put in place, we've already shared those, we have not gone and said, hey, they're in place, and we're doing them yet, but we've had these conversations with our administrators too, so they're aware of it, and I think it's a good step in the right direction, to see how it goes, and we can bring it back to see where we're at.
And I think I can address Mike's question a little bit about where were we 10 years ago? Like, for example, 10 years ago, we were having a two-day weekend-long off-site retreat for all administration, where we were actually going offsite, we had lodging, we had food, we had all of those things in January. That was, and I paid for that out of my budget, that was between $5,000 and $10,000, and we cut that, so that went away. We do have our summer retreat that we've had all along, but that's here in this room, and there are drinks, and, you know, there might be a breakfast, or if we work through lunch, or whatever, you know? So there's a little bit of cost there, and that's consistent, that's been pretty much new teacher orientation, Oasis refreshments for the tutors when they come together, you know, things like that. Nothing astronomical, probably opening day, new teacher breakfast when we have this room packed with 100 people. Those are some of those bigger expenses. CSIP, right?
CSIP this year was a lot of that expense.
But we're feeding 120-plus people coming together.
But again, I took CSIP, I should clarify, CSIP, I did pull that out, even though we did have staff in that group, that was a specific, once every five-year community we loved too, so I did not include that in the... No, it's not.
Some of it is, but not all.
But not all.
Donna, I don't think that we're being cheap in this discussion.
I don't want to look cheap.
I think, you know, like what Charles has done, and to develop the policies that he has, it just shows to me that we are more responsible in what we're doing, that's all.
No, I agree, I think, no, I think looking at it, I think that's needed, but I don't want to get to the point where, when we talk about perception, at our new teacher orientation, these people have chosen to come, we've weeded out and taken the best of the best, we hope, you know, and so suddenly, we have, you know, some donuts in the back. I mean, I realize...
But I can't imagine that a teacher decides on Knoll, because they have more donuts than Harris has, you know?
I didn't mean that they do.
Right, yeah. I think, I think, yeah, I think we understand, we don't, we don't want to give that appearance. At the same time, it is always good to look to see, where can we make adjustments? I remember when I first got on the board, being really intimidated by the check register that, you know, that pops up, and at the same time, you know, at first I was like, well, I'm going to look for everything, $5,000 or more, and really see what that is, but then my thought was, well, I'm kind of, I would be more worried about people nickel-and-diming us, rather than those big things. But I think, you know, again, little things can add up. So if we're looking at things like this, if we can save some money, that's going to help, and it saves some money somewhere else. And in places, yes, sometimes we're going to have to make big, significant changes. But I, again, my personal opinion is I would like to see this procedure in place and see what we get from it.
How does that affect, Kelly, so this new, have you had a chance to look at this new procedure here, on when to spend money, and how to, and so on? Oh, okay. Because, I mean, this is just a question to the board. One of the things that Leslie, you know, first of all, she doesn't eat at our board meetings unless it's veg, you know? But is there some way that, just so we can show good faith, that maybe we can just make a policy on what we, you know, what we cut back to?
We can just do deli sandwiches or something, if that's cheaper, I'm all right with that.
Something basic.
Mike doesn't need anything.
So at least we can, you know, show the, you know, show people that, hey, we're serious about it. Oh, okay, well, I didn't know if you wanted to make that or not.
I think having that for our administrators that have to stay here, instead of having time to go get something, I think that's good for them, you know? And I think that's a minimum cost, I don't think that's a...
Well, and when we're talking about, you know, for our administrators, you know, when we come back, when we have that retreat in the summertime, it's for two days, it's nice to have a breakfast for them, it's nice to have lunch, because that's time for us to really, because we're trying to pour into them too. Now, on the regular days, we do start at 7:30, I don't think it needs to be a hot breakfast at all, but we actually tail that back, kind of tail that back to a continental breakfast and some coffee. I still think that's okay, we're still kind of going through breakfast, and then lunch, we're not really going to do lunch, they're going to be on their own for that, but that's the things that we're going to kind of cut back on a little bit too. But still have some things for them, but maybe not a, and Charles keeps telling me, don't say this, but I'm telling you, as administrator, well, I've said this, as administrator in different districts too, we got to watch what we're doing. And there are a lot of times where, and our, you know, we talk about our teachers using a lot of their own money to pay for things, our administrators do it, and I do, and there's times where I pay for t-shirts and things that I want our staff to have, that I don't want our district to pay for, so I'm willing to do a little bit of that more too, because I don't want, I don't want our staff to go without, and I want our administrators to know how much we care about them. And unfortunately, or fortunately, because I like to eat, food does tell you a lot of times that you care about people, food is part of that. But I think, long story short, I think the procedures are going to put us in the right, is the right step at this point.
I probably overreact, I just, it's the word egregious that says, it's not that bad, it's so...
And Charles told me to also not say this, so, so today...
Charles, there are some of us that listen.
So today, you know, my staff, they bring me the bills each month, and I look through them, and I sign off on them, and so today, evidently Chartwells hasn't billed us, like, for this year, and so today I got all the bills from new teacher orientation, from beginning of the year, Oasis, and I'm like, oh, boy. So when you, so when you see our P card next month, just know.
We're enjoying that percentage up until now.
I can assure you that all the administrators think I am the donut Nazi now, so they're going to go, I'll own it.
All right. So this was a discussion, there was not a motion on the table. That was a lot of discussion. Yeah, no, I don't think we have anything to vote on.
But you all feel like the procedures, we can go forward with the procedures at this point.
Absolutely.
Yes, yeah. All right, thank you, thank you, Charles. St. Charles West Stadium project approval.
So this really isn't about the stadium as much as several projects, the stadium is the largest piece, which is about half, but this project that we're asking you to approve is a $2 million project that includes $1 million to add a new concessions and ticket building, and a new restroom building at the St. Charles West Stadium entry. Those two buildings will be built side by side with the entry in between, a single covered roof over both the buildings, replacing the 1970s-era building that is there now that is wholly inappropriate, if you've been in it. That base bid also includes the addition of the girls restroom in the oldest section of Lewis and Clark, where when we built that building, we didn't think girls went to the tech school. So we're going to add an ADA accessible restroom and upgrade the existing boys restroom there. Alternative one adds a dust collection unit into the brick and stone shop. The brick and stone guys are terribly messy, they also generate a tremendous amount of dust, and so that'll help there. Alternative two is connecting the two main wings of Monroe Elementary on the north side, right next to the new bus lane. This is a project we passed on when we approved the gym and the bus lane, because we wanted to wait and see if we were going to have the money in the bond issue to complete it, and we do. Alternative number three is the driveway and parking at the front of Jefferson. This reworks the front of Jefferson and would allow us to have the existing entry and existing exit for Jefferson and Monroe to both return to two-way traffic. And we're working with the city on a plan to help fund a traffic signal at what is now the entry, which lines up the four-way with Zumbell and Ipswich. That would be similar funding as, like we did at Harden, we'd be on the hook for 25%, the city for 25%, they're going to seek the other 50% from the county road board. I think there's a fairly good chance that that will get funded, since the Zumbell right there is the western city limit, and St. Charles Hills is in the county. So all of that would be included in that $211,000. And then alternate bid number four is also another alternate that we passed on when we did our interior Jefferson upgrades, it's the off suite. We consider that to be the least necessary of the other projects we were doing there, and so we put it off again to see if we had money. So the total in the lowest invested bid from Walker Incorporated is $2,091,000. We have just short of $2.7 million left in our bond fund that's unencumbered. So I was very comfortable going up to $2.2 million for these projects. The rest of that's going to get eaten up pretty fast in fees and furnishings. So this came in well below what we were anticipating our top number to be, so I'm very comfortable in recommending that we take on these projects. The St. Charles West Stadium project and some of the Lewis and Clark upgrades will begin relatively immediately, so before the turn of the year, with completion of the stadium upgrades to be done before the fall season kicks off. Most of the rest of the work will have to be done over next summer.
We were really pleased with how the bids turned out.
Yes. You can see, top to bottom, we had a bunch of bidders, obviously, eight bidders. The current folks we're working with, ICS, Damine, and Wright, all really wanted it. Lamb built the other building at the south end of the stadium, they wanted, you know, they were back in as well as others, so we were excited to see the interest.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we need a motion, please.
It's a long one, do you want to read it?
Well, I would if I could, but I can't.
Oh. I move to approve the contract with Walker Construction for $2.91,000, or $2.91 million for construction of entry buildings at Steve Stahl Stadium, connecting hallways at Monroe Elementary, office renovation at Jefferson, and other minor improvements at Lewis and Clark as presented. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. 7.05, policy changes, first reading. Any questions, thoughts? Okay, that is information, we do not need a motion. Program review, health services. Julie?
School health services, so that's directly related to our... Our clinics and our nursing program and our clinics. So the primary, the primary reason we have our nurses is to help meet the needs of our students with acute and chronic medical needs during the school day, but they also help to promote healthy choices, they are there to identify and locate services for students with health conditions, they're good resources for our families, they collaborate with all of our team members, counselors, social workers, care teams. Right now, we have 10 nurses, one in each of our camp, not campuses, one in each of our buildings, and then three health clerks. So one split between high school, one split between middle school, and one split between elementary, minus Lincoln. The health clerks that we do have are trained in medication administration, first aid, vision and hearing screenings in data entry, so they really help out our nurses quite a bit. So as we kind of look into the nursing program or our health program, we have two big main goals, and those... health, our health program, we have two big main goals. And those are to provide the healthcare instruction to students and staff and to promote safe and healthy school environments by providing leadership to our staff and our students in the provision of those health services. So in kind of looking at how some of those objectives under promoting healthcare, administering medications, a big part of their day or quite a bit of their duties, we have policies and procedures in our Comprehensive Health Services Manual that really help lead, lead our nurses into kind of knowing what the procedures and policies are. That was updated last spring to the great, our lead nurse, Carol Stadler, who retired, worked a couple of years on updating all of those policies and procedures for all of our nurses. To be able to provide timely responses to healthcare needs is another piece of that. Providing and/or accessing healthcare and first aid for all students and district personnel. So they do help treat our district personnel when they're presented with illness or injury. They maintain proper documentation. That's another big piece of their job, is to make sure that all proper documentation is, is kept track of. They come in early before the school year to make sure that all of our kids have their immunizations, have all their health forms filled out, talk with Chartwell's on any kind of allergy, allergy needs. They have life-threatening allergies, food allergies, things like that. So they really do collaborate like across our district with different personnel. So proper documentation on that is super important. Education, they provide education and reinforcement to students with chronic health conditions. We have a few students in our district with pretty significant diabetic needs. And so they will not only provide those needs for kids and help like do checks with them and administer insulin and things like that, but they will also like help educate those kids to be able to, to carry and be able to self-check and things like that. So they document all instructions to staffs and, staff and students. So many of our kids with like ongoing health needs might have 504 plans, IEPs, things like that in which there's, there's necessary training for staff such as administering Epi pens, Glucagon, things like, things like that to our students, in which it's very important that they're documenting that those staffs, such as our bus drivers, our teachers, and administrators in those buildings that work with those kids, make sure they document that they have trained, all those necessary people. And then they act as a liaison between school, staff, families, and healthcare providers. So our nurses are on the phone from the doctor's offices, getting medical information, creating action plans, things like that on a daily basis. Goal number two is more of that providing leadership in their building. And so we, we, our goal is to maximize the time that students attend school. We're proactive and preventative measures to help, to help concerns. As we get a little further into this, I have reported here, health visit, health clinic visits for each building. And then within that, how many kids are actually sent back to class versus how many go home. And really only about 1% to 7% of the kids actually get sent home. A lot of what's going on can be treated in the clinic and then they can get back to class, which helps our attendance, helps keep our attendance rate up. They provide health-related resources toward our district families, provide professional development to professional certified staff, ensure compliance with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services Policies on Immunization. So each year, we are, the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services collects all of our information on immunizations. And they want to know that every single one of our students is either immunized or has the proper exemptions, medical or religious exemptions. That includes not only the kids in our buildings, but even if they're in an outplacement, like in a separate private school, those kids have to actually be immunized as well. And the state will be accountable for that. So it is important every year that we're 100% in compliance. And if we haven't been 100% compliant, we're going to be done about it. So every year, that's something that, that we have to look for. Our nurses abide by procedures set forth by the Department of Health and Senior Services, Bureau of Communicable Disease Control and Prevention. So, you know, when we have kids that present with like whooping coughs or something of the nature that's very contagious, then they have to follow procedures set forth again by the Missouri Department of Health. And they use them as a resource for any type of assistance they need there. They maintain emergency response equipment for, in supplies in their building in case of emergencies. And they are a part of helping update policies and procedures as needed in order to make sure we're promoting quality health service programs. So again, like I said, many of, many of our students' needs are being met by our nurses. They are like little social workers in the medical health type field versus the mental health. Of course, they do work with our students with mental health needs as well. But they provide screening services for our students. They administer oral meds, meds through inhalation devices, G tubes, intramuscular and subcutaneous injections. They provide direct medical interventions to students. They evaluate symptoms of illness, provide education, provide interventions and supports to remove barriers to learning that allow them to return to class for instructional time. And they often, a big part of their job too, is, is providing referrals to appropriate medical and social services. So our nurses are often involved in like Care to Learn referrals. They, there is a list in here of all of the resources that they bring in on a yearly basis. They sometimes change. There's a lot of outside agencies that they help provide information to parents for. And they also bring them on-site to help provide services. For instance, we have lots of dental services, like Big Smiles Dental does cleaning, x-ray, fluoride treatments, fillings. They come into our buildings and actually provide those services to our kids while they're there at school. Same with a lot of our vision. Vision's another one where we're getting kids eyeglasses and vision exams and things like that, that for students who may not have access. We actually tried this year, and I know you guys had approved, I think last year, last spring, you had approved for an immunization clinic to, in flu shot clinic to be able to provide all of those for our school district students this year. Unfortunately, the program that was going to provide those services, there was something legally that kind of fell through and they weren't able to provide that this year. So hopefully in the future, whatever that, I think it was probably a confidentiality piece or some kind of information piece in which they weren't able to help us. But let's see. So we know the students who are experiencing unstable health conditions tend to experience difficulty with school attendance, achievement, and social interaction. So a lot of what our, our nurses do really is important to keeping those kids in school and... Helping them socially and academically. So in kind of looking just at the, the first chart there on page five, I just kind of ran through, just so you saw, this is pretty consistent throughout, I think, over the past few, few years. Our nurses, every time a student walks into the clinic, they have to record like that they're actually seeing, like what they're, they're having an encounter with a student. We have, I know a few years ago, there was a little more discrepancy in between buildings as far as number of visits. We are getting better about what constitutes a student encounter. I think sometimes the nurses were counting, contacting doctors and faxing and emails and things like that as student encounters and others were not. So some of the numbers had looked inflated in the, in the past. But they are getting a little more on the same page there. So as you kind of look, basically, each of our buildings minus the middle and high school, it looks like there's a lot of visits that happen, not middle and high, intermediate and middle school, are kind of our biggest influxes of clinic visits. Not sure exactly why. I kind, you know, is, is middle and intermediate school kids. I think there's a lot of growing and a lot of maturation there that may be part of that. It also might be the way they're counting their visits. But in kind of looking at this, as I said before, about 1% to 7% of our kids in our building actually end up going home because of an illness. A lot of it, a lot of the encounters end up being something in which our students can go back to class. So I have those on there for each of our buildings.
This is part of the original...
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then as you go down to page nine, kind of after, after I get through the, all of the buildings, those are just for the first three months of this school year. They, they look very similar to last year's numbers, the year before, you know, they're, they're very similar. But there's a lot of visits that go on there. So evidence of positive impact. So by having licensed professionals at each school, we really feel like those at-risk kids and those kids with like continuous health needs are actually getting some of those services that maybe they weren't able to get if we didn't have nurses in the clinics. We really feel like our teachers are getting the support they need in the, in the buildings in order to support a student who might be having a seizure or might be having, you know, might, might be suffering from an asthma attack or, you know, they, they're showing them those look fours. Let's see. So our nurses also, as I said, support our families. And so that next chart on page 10 are a lot of those... What's the matter?
Just about the...
Oh, okay. So on page 10, we have those outside agencies. If you look through there, where we have a doctor on staff, Michael Adams. He is kind of our district doctor who provides standing orders for our nurses. So in order for them to even be able to like administer an over-the-counter medication for a Benadryl for, you know, a allergy attack, we have to have standing orders with a doctor. And so he's kind of our consult there and he provides that for, for our nurses. Care to Learn is also an organization that we really use for our students that might have health issues in which are greater than just something that can be addressed in our clinic. So we are able to use a lot of those funds that we've raised in order to provide additional support for our students. And as I kind of mentioned briefly earlier, they are part of IEP and 504 Teams for Students with Disabilities. So they are an integral part there. They provide a lot of training and a lot of support for those students. All right. I think I mentioned a lot of this. Us, our teachers, our nurses use that Comprehensive Health Services Manual that we updated last year that's available to all of our, our administrators and nurses and health clerks on the Google Drive. That's another piece where they really can show, share protocol and forms and things like that with each other so that we're doing things consistently across the, the district. With the training of our teachers, it comes the training of our nurses as well. And so there's, they attend a lot of professional development throughout the year in order to make sure that they're keeping up to date on things. We've seen a, a big increase in students with like life-threatening allergies. That's kind of been our biggest increase over the, the years. And so our nurses need training on all of those, you know, all of those health concerns. They attend state conferences. They deal a lot with mental health and have attended a lot of conferences and a lot of training, including our trauma training in the district this year. Drug abuse and how to administer Narcan, they've done training there. CPR, first aid, diabetes, communicable diseases, those are a lot of the, the topics in which a lot of their professional development is geared towards. As I said, students with life-threatening allergies, as you look, every year the, the state, our nurses provide this information in the inventory of students with special healthcare needs. Our nurses provide that health information to the state and they provide us this report back based on it. And so it's interesting to kind of compare the numbers because those life-threatening allergies are the biggest, they're kind of the scariest things and they're also the things that, the needs that are growing. And so it, like this summer, we made sure to sit down with Chartwell's because a lot of, a lot of importance is put on the food that they're eating during the school day. And so Chartwell's, our food service, our food service program, they can look into our student information system and find out from what the nurses put in there exactly what allergies they have. And they will, it will flag to them what kind of food they need to prepare during the day. If they're having parties and ordering things, then it flags, it flags it so that we make sure kids are not around anything that's going to provide life-threatening, that is life-threatening to them. Let's see. So is, my recommendations for further improvement are at the end of this report. So again, our big rock is mental health, not mental health, but student needs. Mental health is a big piece of that. Mental health is becoming more and more a part of overall health as well. So professional development for nurses and our counselors and all of our teachers and staff to really help keeping kids in school and keeping them healthy is one thing, one recommendation that I have, especially since it's a big rock and it's something we are working toward. And the last policy that you just, you just approved a few minutes ago talks about a school health advisory coun, council, which is composed of a school nurse, a counselor, and board, board-appointed members of the community to work with the nursing staff to incorporate community priorities and values into the district student health services. So that council is now required. And so that is a recommendation that we get, we get that council formed and started. And then the last four things were kind of above and beyond things that maybe we're doing currently that we would like to reach for. And they really came out of our CSIP committee as well. So these are four of our CSIP goals. One was that we are proactively supporting families by looking for more community partners related to health and mental health, having them available at the back-to-school resource fair and appropriate school events. One thing I heard last Friday, which was fantastic, and was that one of the school districts in the area had, what is, what are they, Legal Services of Eastern Missouri provided people at each of the buildings during parent-teacher conference to help parents that did not have insurance sign up for Medicaid and to get them signed up with health insurance, which was wonderful. So, I mean, that would be a school event where we have parents coming in that we can help support. Looking for further ways to support families and students by collaborating with hospitals, clinics, and healthcare agencies based on determined areas of need and need for the, the district health for partnerships. We have a lot of great hospitals and medical, medical facilities in our, in our district. So looking for ways to collaborate with them. We're doing a lot more of that with Care to Learn, kind of automatically, because when we look at trying to support families that have health, hunger, and hygiene needs, we have automatically tried to start connecting with, with those medical agencies and hospitals so that we can provide more services for those families. Second to last one, explore the feasibility and possibility to offer basic, basic medical care to students, like possibly an in, in-district clinic in the future that if you're part of CSIP, we talked about, like a, hopefully never, not a pipe dream, but you know, like what could we, we have districts in the area that provide medical cares, like doctor medical care for children with more, more medical needs in the district. And I know that's something that we've all talked about would be so wonderful if we didn't have any kids in the district that weren't able to have doctor care, at least at some level. And then researching funding sources to develop innovative programs such as maybe that clinic to meet the health needs of students. So those are some of the big things that we'd like to look for, you know, as we move on through our CSIP over the next five years, four years, four and a half years. Any questions? Sorry, I was trying to talk fast, so I didn't...
So I guess I have two questions.
Yes.
So my first one, I noticed that in 2019, we, it looks like we have one pregnant student. What kind of support do we provide for that student, I guess during and even after pregnancy, after she gets birthed?
Well, not knowing exactly who that student was necessarily, but I think I know who that student was, we were able to provide a lot of support. For instance, I know that that student during the pregnancy became homeless as well. And so we were... so we were transporting that student to and from, if it is the student I think, you know, that I'm thinking of, to and from a shelter for women in O'Fallon. So in order to keep her in school and to keep her, you know, and with a stable educational environment, that was one of the biggest things. You know, our, our nurses, you know, I, I believe that she checked in on her, you know, weight and things like that, but I think that, that child was also getting support within the home. So they do parenting classes. I am, I think I mentioned it in here, I can't remember, if they have a, I know what it was, it was on that list of resources. If they have enough kids, which we haven't, which is a good thing, I guess, they will provide a lot of parenting classes and things on pregnancy. But, I mean, our nurses counsel with our kiddos a lot and I know our social worker was very involved with that student as well. We did, we provided homebound services for her as well. Thank you, Danielle. Sorry.
And so our nurses doing a great job and we're always striving to get better, right?
They're busy.
So how, it's not like we can have less people get sick, less people have allergies. So how do we, how do we know that, that we're getting better? And I know that's a broad.
I think with, I, to me, it was kind of an aha moment this summer with, when we really sat down, luckily they come in early because it's really hard to get them together because you don't want those ladies out of the, I say ladies because they are all ladies right now, but you don't want them all out of the building at one time for obvious reasons. But we were able to really meet this summer and really, I think communication's the biggest piece because when we sat down with ChartWells, we sat down with, who else was there? We've sat down with Cindy from Transportation. Yeah, well, I was thinking at our meeting, we really try to look at all of the, the pieces to the puzzle. So transportation's a huge piece. So these kids that might have diabetic, you know, issues and might be really needy that way, when they walk out of school, they still have to take the bus home. So we have to make sure that if something happens on the bus, that we're communicating with transportation, training bus drivers, backup bus drivers. So our nurses go over there and do trainings. The food service was, was huge. I think communication's huge. That's our biggest way that I can see we're improving because I think every time we meet, we're seeing less and less holes, I guess. You know, we, we talk about what constitutes a life-threatening allergy that's actually been determined by a doctor and then which is mom or dad doesn't want a kiddo to have milk because, you know, whatever reason. So really being able to document and communicate with all of our stakeholders, all of our principals, all of our social workers. That's how I can really feel like we're improving and just knowing with these, 100% is only, is the only good enough. I mean, if there are, they've, you can't mess up, so I don't know.
I'm moved to approve the health service review as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
A vote? Motion carries. All right, Danielle. Achievement Program Review. We're ready. We're ready. Yes. This looks really good.
I have to get up tomorrow.
This sounds terrifying.
Do we need to take like this?
Pause. Brief pause. Because I, I've seen this report.
We'll take a five-minute pause. Please, it's keeping me. This is going to be riveting, you're going to love it.
If we already saw it, can we?
You cold for us or were you outside? Oh, really? Well, we also lost 75% of our people. Keep them, keep them next to me, I'll, I'll, I'll help you out with them. So Jessica, do you and Nicole have a speaking part in this too?
We're here to provide support in extra detail if necessary.
And love spending time with us in those comfortable chairs. We'll find a way to include you then. We don't want, we don't want this to be a wasted evening.
It's not a wasted evening. I, no, no.
Okay.
We've looked at data a lot.
We have, we have gone through this report like you wouldn't believe. We are ready to roll.
All right.
And she'll be done by quarter to half?
Let us resume. That feels great.
All right, everybody.
Hi.
Yeah, ready?
So we're going to spend this next little bit of time together talking about our student achievement from last school year from 2018, 19. We're going to cover a few different topics. We're going to talk about our annual performance report, which is published by the Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. It's basically like our school district report card. We're going to talk about our ACT scores, advanced placement scores, the math program, and the course exams at the high school level. I'm going to talk to you a little bit about homegrown data and then we also are going to talk about every student's C-VAC and targeted schools. So we have quite a bit to kind of cover together. So our DESI changed up how they report out our annual performance report and so it was delayed a little bit this year. So it was, it was made public on October 17th. And so we do have some new things for this year. We have the new APR format, which I'll show you here in just a second. We also have new science tests this year and then our social studies test is field-tested so we don't have any scores at all for social studies. So when we look at our N-CENT 5 accreditation criteria, we have the new format and so we no longer have the points or percentages that we've become accustomed to in referencing achievement in school districts. They did keep the same standards. We still have academic achievement, subgroup achievement, quality career readiness, attendance and graduation rates. You're going to see in a second when I show you this that we did get science scores this year, but they have not yet uploaded those into our annual performance report and they're not going to do that until November, till right around Thanksgiving. And then we don't have a social studies score. So this is what we had previously. So you'll remember that last school year, we had 96.8% of the points and you can see that from 2015 to 2018, we, we, it was the highest APR percentage that we had. And so we were really proud that we were on this positive trajectory. So this year, DESI moved to creating these bands of color for us to be able to show where districts are performing. And so you'll see the three different bands, it's kind of small up there. The band on the left is the one that looks at student growth over time. And so it answers the question of are individual students making achievements gains over time? And so when students have taken three years of assessments with us, then they create a growth score that can populate some of these fields. The middle set of colored bands are the status indicators. And so status means like as a district, how are we achieving? Are we achieving at high levels? Are we kind of average? Are we below? So this is the area that on the old APR system, this one kind of got the most amount of points because how are you performing as a district? And so that answers the question of are all students achieving at high levels at this point in time? And then the bands on the right side are all about progress. And so this is as a district, how are we improving over time? And so that answers the question is, is the school district or charter making improvements over prior years? And so as we started to move to this new system that the state rolled out, EdPlus and other organizations started looking at the APR this year for multiple types of school districts and comparing it to previous years as well. And what they found was that if you have schools that are high performing, so they are performing really well on the status column, that middle column, then you might not see that as much high scores or as much improvement on either the growth or the progress sides because they're already performing at high levels, so there's not a whole lot of improvement that you're seeing. And then on the flip side, when they looked at schools that maybe didn't have high overall performance, they had higher scores than for growth and progress because they weren't really scoring really high, but that gave more room for individual student growth over time as well as district growth over time. And so that's kind of true for us. So if you look at the middle column for us for the academic achievement, you'll see that our scores are all kind of in that green column. And so that by the state is on track. So they're looking for us to be in the green column or the blue column is the target. And the target is the, the target that the state has put into place for the state to be in the top 10 states in the United States by 2020. So if you see us in any of the blue areas, that's like you're, you're, we're hitting the target the state wants us to be as a state by 2020.
Excuse me, say that last part again.
So the blue area is the target that the state has kind of arbitrarily determined that if we hit that, that set of, or that range of proficiency, then that's where the state wants us to be by 2020 so that our state can be in the top 10 states across the United States.
So you really have to excel in that area.
Correct. It's hard to get in the blue area and if you're in the blue area, you should celebrate it. Then you'll also see, if you see like the little triangles, the little triangle represents where the state is for performance and then the little line next to the triangle is where the district is. And so you'll see in terms of academic achievement for English Language Arts and Math, we are above the state and we're also in that green area. So we're on track, we're right where we should be. When you look at our subgroup achievement, which is the number two there for English Language Arts and Math, again, we're on track. And you're going to see that like for individual progress, we're, we're not seeing a whole lot of movement for our kiddos, so we're a little lower there, but we are at the on-track level for both achievement and the subgroup achievement. And subgroup achievement is for all of our students that fall into minority categories, grade-reduced lunch, they're English language learners, they might be special education. So those are the kiddos that typically or historically across the United States have had achievement gaps from your, from your total population of students. So that's kind of where we are on those first categories. Then our APR also looks at quality and career readiness. And so here, you're going to see that we don't have the progress or the growth measure because you have to have three, four more data points for students and these are typically assessments that students only take maybe once or maybe twice in terms of like AP or ACT or something like that. So you're only going to see our, our status, which is the first set of columns, and then the second one is progress as a district. And so under the quality and career readiness, our CCR assessments, which include ACT performance, you're going to see we're in the blue area, right? So we're in that target for the state and we're above the state performance as well. And then if you look at advanced placement, again, we're in the target range, so that's super exciting. And then post-secondary placement, we are, are there as well. And so we're doing, in terms of quality and career readiness, we're doing very well as compared to many others across the state. And then when we look at our fourth indicator for attendance, again, we're in that target range. We had 92% of our students that had 90% or better attendance across the board. So that's a really great thing and we're above the state as well. And then when you look at our graduation rate, the state breaks it out in four-year cohorts, five-year, six-year and seven-year cohorts. So this is the area that if we were to look at our APR, while we are on track, we are below the state and this is an area that as a district, we have room for improvement. And through our CSIP process, this is an area that we identified as an area for improvement that we need to continue working on as well. So I'm not really going to go through all of these. These are the, the data sheets that support the APR bars that they just showed us, but you will see on here that for science, there are no scores populated yet and there are scores for social studies.
Please back up.
Yeah.
On that attendance, so am I correct in understanding that even though we are targeted, at the target level for attendance, we have come down 0.1%?
Yes. So from, so let me show you the data to go with this. Okay, so, hold on, you ready again? Okay, so to answer your question, Marina up here, so does this have a, there?
A pointer.
The red line, I think.
Okay, there we go. Okay, so this is the attendance data that's right up here, Marina. So if you look at 2018, so this looks like it was, I don't really rate, so about 90?
92.3.
92.9.
Thank you, 92.3. And then if you look at 2019, you are at 90.8. So from 2018 to 2019, we declined by one point, whatever is there. So on the APR, what you saw is absolutely right, is right here, it shows that we declined by about one percentage point from 2018 to 2019, which in the grand scheme of things is not a huge discrepancy, but it was a decline from one year to the next. This is an area, while we're, we're performing at that target level, when I gave this presentation to the administrators, I reminded them that this is an area that could slip away quickly if we don't keep our eye on it. And so a couple of years ago, we really put some practices in place to improve attendance across the district and we saw great gains across the district. And so I just reminded them that I feel like in a little bit, we're kind of getting comfortable in our practices and so. And so we had that conversation of revitalizing our practices for attendance, making sure that we really are following up with individual students and families to make sure they're coming to school. The other, the other area that I kind of wanted to point out was with college and career readiness. I really wanted to give some shout-outs to a couple of groups. For advanced placement, if you look at our advanced placement over time, we're seeing some nice growth in our advanced placement students, the numbers of students that are seeking advanced placement and the, the scoring of their scores are increasing consistently over time. And the other piece, I wanted to give a shout-out to our high school guidance departments. For our post-secondary placement, they have to follow up with our graduates six months after they graduate to see where they are. Are they in college? Are they employed? Are they in the military? What are they doing? And how does that relate to the coursework that they took with us in high school? And so we used to work with that independent survey company to do this, and they didn't get great results. Our guidance counselors came to us and they said we could do better, and they have. And so you'll see that we went from eighty-one point four percent of our students responding that they were working in, or that our high school coursework was helping support them where they were, to the last two years, that dropped to ninety-five point seven percent in two thousand and eighteen and ninety-seven point six percent in two thousand and nineteen. And so that is a direct result of our high school guidance counselors taking that on. And so it's nice that we're able to get that for us. Also with graduation rate, I know I mentioned that this is an area that we need to continue to improve. If you look at our four-year cohort over time, we are improving, but we still have more work to do. That's an area that needs to be focused on for us. So this is kind of a quick glance at each of our schools. Also, we're given annual performance reports by the state, looking at all of those areas. And the green, remember, is on track. The blue is we're hitting that twenty-twenty target for the state. The yellow is we're approaching. And so you can see that as, as a district, we're green and blue, and on the second sheet, you'll see in a second. And then you'll see each of our schools across the top. You can see that at Jefferson, Harden and St. Charles High, we have some areas where they're approaching. And we're gonna talk about our math performance in a minute, and you'll see where we're starting to make some gains. But those are some areas that we need to continue focusing and working on. And so that's academic achievement, it's subgroup achievement, quality and career readiness. And you can see then here, it's continued with quality and career readiness, attendance and graduation. I know that many of us also wanna compare where we are in the county or with other districts. And so looking at the annual performance report for the area, for the county, for Francis Howell, for Sumot, for Woodford and Winstill, we also threw in Pattonville because they are also our neighbors and also of similar size. We threw in Arrockwood and Alidu based upon public perception of the quality of the programming that you receive in those two school districts. And we also threw in an Aston and a Bayless because when you look at demographics of English language learners and grade reduced populations, we compare quite a bit to them as well. And so if you, if you look at our St. Charles County schools here, you, you will see that we are on par with all of our St. Charles County schools. Francis Howell is hitting the target for academic achievement for English Language Arts and Math. But you can see we are right along with our county teachers. And in terms of Pattonville, we're, we're outperforming them on some quality and career readiness standards. And then we look at our Aston and our Bayless, then we're outperforming them as well. And then when you look at this, this comparison, you can see our graduation rate that I already mentioned, that's the area of focus for us. That is the area that we need to continue working on. Woodford Farm is there with us, Pattonville is there with us, but those are areas that we wanna continue.
How many, how many of our students are on the five and six-year and seven-year plan?
You know what? Let me go back to the data sheet.
Okay, I'll give them the year. How about six or seven-year plan?
So it's not a huge number. What I'm looking at right here, let's see. Graduation rate for two thousand and nineteen, we had three hundred and forty-six four-year graduates. In two thousand and nineteen... Although I think, the number that you're looking for, I'm not gonna be able to get from this number because it's basically, I think it's just adding on to the previous year to that cohort.
Is it more than a handful?
Well, do, would you have to know, because a lot of those students that are there for five, six, seven years are many times some of our special education students.
But they, I don't think they should be counted in that though, because they have a different graduation code if they're graduating on goals and objectives. I don't know that they're being counted on in that group. Because they have a GO three code, so they should be coded differently.
I don't think we'd know if we had a problem with like ten people doing high schools for seven years.
Well, that's why I wonder why that's even in there, you know, is that we're on target, you know, like, why is that even in there?
So typically, when students stay longer with us for graduation, one, they could be credit deficient. So they might be going through our success program, they might be doing Missouri options, things like that, getting caught up. Students who have special education needs and also are English language learners, many times depending on when they come to us, they will stay until they're twenty or twenty-one to try to acquire the English skills necessary to be successful. And so students can stay with us until they're comfortable with it.
Yeah. And we did talk recently, just to make sure that our kiddos that are, if they're graduating on goals and objectives because they're a special education student, they're supposed to be coded a little differently as a GO three instead of a GO one. And so they, they shouldn't count in that, but we were checking to make sure that none of those kids got counted.
Okay.
If they weren't coded correctly or something.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so that was the section for our annual performance report. I know it's very different than what we've seen in the past. Do we have any other questions?
So Danielle, what would you say would be the one or two most controllable things on our end to positively affect graduation rates?
Oh, that's a good question. So one of the things that we're going to create out of our CSAT committee is a graduation rate committee. And so they are going to be tasked with looking at resources, looking at our students, talking to our students of what can we do to help adjust this? Some of the things that Dr. Harris is already doing with Success Campus was this year, she got ahold of our list of students who did not graduate last year, and she started calling them and their families and saying, you know what? We understand that you dropped out, we understand that you're, but listen, did you know we have Missouri options? Did you know you can come back? We will take you back. And granted, they'll still count as like dropouts for us, but we can recapture them for graduation rate if they do graduate with us. And she was able to get a handful of students to come back to just go. So she's doing that. Her team is actually doing a book study on basically like resiliency and learning and impacting the graduation rates who are starting at work. I think a lot of this boils down to relationships with kids. Making them understand that A, we love that this is a safe place, we are here to help you, we want you to be successful, so that piece of it.
And that's a big rock that student needs.
Right. And then we also have the side of it that many of our students, and we'll talk about this in a little bit too, when we had conversations with our kiddos of like, why are you struggling, you know, what, many times they are working multiple jobs to help support their family. It could be that their parents are ill, they're dealing with mental illness, they're helping take care of younger brothers and sisters. Like, the reality of life gets them, right? And so I think our kiddos, especially if you're comparing us to our other county counterparts, our district is more diverse. Our district has over double the percentage of grade reduced lunch kiddos than our counterparts do. You know, Howell's sitting at like eighteen percent, so is Fort Sumot. We're sitting at forty-two to forty-four percent of our students are grade reduced lunch. So we have those complications. We have many more students who are English language learners than our county counterparts. So I think that the reality of life setting in and those, those family obligations and helping to take that sometimes can supersede, you know, the importance of, of an education at times. And so if we can go back and capture them, kind of like what Dr. Harris is doing, let's bring them back. Because we can, we can help them, knowing that programs are in place. And so with this, you know, this is an area that we're gonna pull people together, we're gonna start doing good work and we're gonna really look at some research and look at other schools. There are ninety-niney-ninety schools which are ninety percent minority, ninety percent proficiency, ninety percent attendance, that they're being done with student populations that have lots of diversity, they're grade reduced lunch, they have life challenges too. And so what can we learn and then to help put a place for it?
Dr. Harris is also looking at other programming through the district and, and that alternative education piece that we've talked about. And a lot of that is, it's forward in our CSAT plan as well, so.
Thank you.
You hope other questions about ACT or APR, we're gonna move on. Okay, we're gonna move on. ACT, so when we look at our ACT, we had about sixty-seven percent of our graduates take the ACT compared to fifty-two percent nationwide. About forty-nine and a half percent scored above the national average of twenty point seven. And eight of our graduates earned the distinction of bright light with a score of thirty-four. And then when we look at our ACT in general, so you can see the composite for the state was twenty point seven, or I'm sorry, the nation was twenty point seven, the state was twenty point eight, as a district we were twenty point nine. When you look at St. Charles High, they were at twenty point three, and St. Charles West was at twenty-one point five. So we are above the state and nation, but we do have some areas for improvement. St. Charles High is putting some things into their school improvement plan to continue to work on this, especially when you look at our English sub-scores, St. Charles High, they were in the nineteenth. And that for us, there, that's an area for strong improvement right away. So they're, they're putting actions in their plan to address this. When you look at our five-year comparison for the district state and nation, in two thousand fourteen, fifteen, this was a typical year for ACT. It was typically our college-bound kiddos taking the assessments. You'll recall in two thousand fifteen, sixteen through two thousand seventeen, eighteen, that is when the state of Missouri implemented the mandatory ACT for all eleventh grade students, even if they weren't college-bound. This literally was every kid. And so you can see that had an impact on us as a district and as a state. But you can also see that this year, when we, when we came back, we actually, for the first time in the last five years, are outperforming now the state and nation. So that's probably. One of the things that I really wanted to look at was homegrown data. And so you're gonna see me talk about this after each section. So we know that our teachers are working their tails off. We know that we see amazing instructional practices happening every day in our classrooms. We know our schools are safe, we know our kids are learning, we see great things happen. And sometimes we struggle when we look at our, our achievement results, and we're like, what, what is happening? Where's the disconnect? And so I wanted to go back and look at our homegrown data because our principals and our teachers are saying, the kiddos that are moving in, they're coming to us with significant needs. They're coming with, they're coming with major skill gaps, much lower than their age appropriate here. They're coming with mental issues, they're the ones that are having these social emotional issues as well. And so I want, I wanted to go back and look at this. And so for the ACT scores, I looked at our students who started with us in kindergarten. And those students for the two thousand and nineteen graduating class, their average composite score was a twenty-one point eight. Well, you'll remember, I just told you our district composite was twenty point nine. So our kidd, our students that started with us are, are outperforming our entire class as a whole by almost one composite point. Well, then I wanted to compare them to the kids that came to us, students that came to us between first and eighth grades. So here you'll see that we, that our kindergarten students are outperforming those students by one point four composite points. And remember, on the ACT, a tenth of a point is a significant move. So these are big numbers. And then looking at our kindergarten class versus those students that come to us sometime during the high school years, and that is a, a difference of two point four composite points. I did this research with, several years ago, with two thousand and sixteen graduates. And so at that point, our kindergarten cohort outperformed our, our high school, the students that would enter high school by two point oh composite points. And now that has creeped out to two point four composite points. So what this tells me is that our students do better when they're here with us longer. What we do with our kids matters, and this is that kind of data that shows like we are seeing improvements with our students. And if we can keep, get them here early and keep them here, then we're going to see strong improvements and strong academic achievement.
I have something to say.
Yes.
You originally, I don't know, a week or two ago, you sent something out.
That's a nonsense.
Yeah, I thought that was a very interesting study about the homegrown. But my question is, so this, to me, almost identifies twenty-one percent of our student population who need interventions, right?
It could be, not necessarily. So the twenty-one percent comes from, I looked at last year's enrollment, and the students that came in new to us outside of kindergarten, kindergarten is ours, but if they came in new to us first grade through twelfth grade or if they left us. And so twenty-one percent of our student population last year was in transition. They were either coming to us or leaving us. And so that's a pretty high chance of you getting students.
Yes.
I would say not one hundred percent of students that come to us need intervention, but many of them do, many of them do. And so, and many of our current students need intervention. And so that's a part of our typical process that we're doing. And so when you hear Dr. Secret talk about RTI, response to intervention, and you heard Coverdale, and you heard Wes talk about that tonight, those are practices that we already have in place. I don't know that it means that we have to work harder. I think it means we might need to work a little smarter and a little differently. That when the students are coming to us, we probably need to do a better job of screening them when they come in to find out where they are.
That, that was my question. Do we test these people when they come in?
Not necessarily, not necessarily. And so they come in, now, if they're English language learners, there are English language tests that we have to give them within so many days when they come in, but not necessarily. So I think that that's an area for potential improvement for us of how do we find out where they are right away and then introduce them? So we're in the process right now of going through our school improvement meetings with each of the schools. Because every year they, they create a school improvement plan based upon the district schools and based upon their achievements. And so today, we were at Mill Elementary, and one of the things that they started this year is that for all of their, like new students when they're coming in, they're monitoring them right away, and, and for their current students, if they see that kids are slipping, they're not waiting till that first parent-teacher conference in October to have conversations. They're actually contacting the parents and they're bringing them in between four, every four and six weeks for a face-to-face meeting on where their children are and how they're improving. And they actually told the story of a, of a child that just moved in this year from another district, second grade student, but was reading on a kindergarten level. And when they contacted that family to come in and for, for this meeting, the, the family was really concerned and upset. And how dare this school and, but at the end of the meeting, they said, oh my goodness, thank you so much. We don't know, like, nobody has ever told us where our child is. We didn't know that he or she was at this level. And now they're on this path together to try to help address the needs, and the parents are providing tutoring and things like that. And the school is putting in that extra communication layer, layer and that extra time earlier to make sure that they're meeting the needs. And I thought that that was particularly impressive. So the schools are doing those types of things to try to address them.
Thank you.
Other questions about ACT? I'm gonna move on to advanced placement then. So advanced placement exams, we have high, we have many courses at our high school level that are AP courses. And so students could take that, that class and they can take the AP exam, or they can just take the AP exam without taking the class. And if they earn a three, four or five on that assessment, then many colleges will accept that as college credit. So with that, we had eleven of our students this year that were, earned the AP scholar designation. So they earned a three or higher on three or more exams. We had three students that had the AP scholar honors designation, and so they had an average score of three point two five on four or more AP exams. And then we had one student with the AP scholar distinction. And so they had an average score of three point five on all AP exams taken, and they earned a score of three or more on at least five AP assessments. And so that is a really big deal. The reason that I point this out is that this, this group of students in two thousand and nineteen earned more award designations than we have ever had in the district before. So that's really exciting. Then when you look at the number of students that are taking AP assessments, you can see back in two thousand and fifteen, we were at eighty-two camp, eighty-two exams taken. In the last two years, we've had a hundred and fourteen. Now, there is a reason for this, two reasons actually. One reason is that we moved to the cum laude graduation honors, and in order to get in those highest categories, you have to take more AP classes. The likelihood is, if you take an AP class, you're probably gonna take a D, right? Because you wanna get that opportunity for college credit. So we've built in a recognition structure that honors this. The other thing is our high schools have also been purposely trying to encourage more students from subgroup backgrounds, from minority backgrounds, grade-reduced lunch backgrounds, to take the AP assessments to help remove some of that financial burden of those assessments so that more kids take them. And so we're excited to see that this is where we're heading, that more students are actually trying, and they're looking at that as well. So questions about AP? And this is one of those areas on the college and career readiness on the APR where we saw strong improvement. This is one of those blue areas that we're in and that we're continuing to grow. Okay, you ready for math? Okay, so you all here, listen to me on this year after year, and I tell you all the changes. So this is just a running list of all of the changes that the math assessment program has had over the last few years. From two thousand and seventeen, when the state tossed out all algebra one and English II scores because of, I don't know, like, recording errors, and they couldn't trust the scores. In seventeen eighteen, we had new English and math scores, so they said you can't really compare that to previous years. Seventeen eighteen, we field tested the science test, so we didn't have any scores then. Eighteen nineteen, we had the new science test, so we have new scores. And then this year, they're field testing social studies, so there's no score there. So there's always something new happening. So this is a quick snapshot, if you wanna look at the district as a whole, including all of our buildings, with where, how we're performing as compared to the state. So you can see the state's scores are in yellow here. You'll notice that science, I have not color-coded it at all because that is a new assessment. They say we can't compare it to previous years. And then you'll see we have no scores for social studies yet. The color coding I have here is if it's the blue color, that means they scored higher than the state. If it's green, they scored, or they had improvement over last year. And if it's this kind of variegated color, then that is both. That's higher than the state and they showed improvement. And so that's where we definitely wanna see the majority of our schools. And so that you can see here that, that we're either higher than the state, or we're improving, or both, for the vast majority of our schools. You'll see at St. Charles High School, you'll remember last year, we had a lot of conversation around algebra and mathematics. And so while we're still not above the state for that, we did see improvement. So we were able to move the bar for our students there. And then St. Charles High also, this year, they had a dip with their communication arts scores. So that's an area that they're going to continue to work on. But it is exciting to see so many of our schools that have both, they're higher than the state and are continuing to improve. So with communication arts, when we look at the last five years, you can see that for this year, and this is, this three-digit number is the Math Performance Index. And so this is a number that takes into consideration all student performance. So for the math assessment, you have four designations. You have advanced, proficient, basic, and below basic. And so this number takes into consideration all students. And so with this, this, our school district is the blue line, the state is the red line. You can see that we are pulling away here, and we are about fifteen point three MPI points above the state. And then with this, this slide, we're looking at the percent of just proficient and advanced. And so here, we continue to outperform the state as well. When we look at all of our schools across the board and the state, you can see that we have several schools that are really outperforming quite a bit, especially at the elementary level. Our schools do exceedingly well with communication arts. And you can see, as I mentioned, St. Charles High took a dip with their communication arts scores this year, and so we have some work to do there. When we start looking at five-year comparisons for our different disaggregated groups, I'll start kind of sharing with you, the district is yellow, the state is blue, and then you'll see at the bottom, this is the difference between the district and the state. So this is just communication arts as a whole. So you can see we're outperforming the state by about five percent for the percentage of students in the top two categories. For our Caucasian students, we're outperforming by about four percent. For our African-American students, this is pretty significant. We're outperforming the state by about eleven percent. And so when you start looking at our African-American students and some of our other subgroup populations, you're gonna see in many areas where we're outpacing the state. And that's, that's part of, we had a strong focus on making sure that we're using strategies in the classroom that engage our students, meet them where they are, providing interventions, RTI, things like that. And so this is, this is a really strong indicator that we're very excited about. When we look at our Hispanic students here, we are, for the first time in the last five years, outperforming the state. And if you look at the difference here from two thousand and fifteen to now, we have steadily improved. And so we're excited to see where this will continue to go for our Hispanic students. Grade-reduced lunch, we're outperforming the state by about four and a half percent. English language learners, we're outperforming the state by about six percent. Special ed, we're outperforming the state by seven point one. This is another one that I really wanna highlight too, because when you look at the last five years, that is a strong trajectory. And so I know we worked really hard at meeting our, our, the needs of our students, and so it's, it's nice to see that that kind of came out this year with our, with our scores.
Can we point to something in particular that's made a difference?
Do you want to speak to that at all?
I think, this isn't I think, this is, that we're doing a better job of providing regular ed curriculum. And like, our, these ladies have really worked with me to, as, twenty years ago, when I walked into my first special ed classroom, I used, and you can probably talk to this mic, I used whatever was left over that I could find to teach my kids with. And so these ladies and Danielle have been really good about making sure that our special ed teachers have access to the general ed curriculum as well. A lot of our students are not in there because they can't perform at, you know, they're not in smaller classrooms because they can't perform at the same levels. There's a lot of other reasons they might be in a smaller setting. And I think that's a huge piece of it, because if you're not exposed to the regular ed curriculum, you're not going to be able to perform. I think that's a huge piece.
And a fundamental part of RTI is that all students have access to grade-level material, and that's a big piece. And it's a huge, a different philosophy to really undertake, and that's what we're doing.
So now I wanna look at a little homegrown data for our English language arts, math assessments. So when you look at this, this looks from third grade through eighth grade. There's a couple of things that I wanna point out, a couple of things that I found kind of interesting. In third grade, we have about seventy-two percent of our population is homegrown, about twenty-eight percent is next to us, right? So then when we go to fourth, fifth, and sixth, those are all pretty similar. About sixty-five, sixty-six percent are homegrown, and about thirty-four to thirty-five percent are not. When you go to seventh grade, it's fifty-six percent is homegrown, forty-four percent not. And then when you get to eighth grade, this is the tipping point. This is where we now have more students who are not homegrown that homegrown. So we have forty-nine percent of our eighth-grade population last year were homegrown, fifty-one percent were not. And then that obviously just continues as we get into high school. So when you look at this though, it's very telling that our homegrown population in nearly all cases is significantly outperforming our, our non-homegrown. Especially if you look at here, our fifth grade, they're outperforming by almost fifteen percent of the students that are proficient and advanced. So they're sitting at about fifty percent versus thirty-five percent. And then if you also look at grade here, it's about thirteen percent difference. So it, it's a strong, our homegrown students are significantly outperforming our non-homegrown. When you look at eighth grade for ELA, that is, is much closer, it's, we actually, oops, sorry, didn't outperform, so it was right at about the same, it was a negative zero point seven difference. But that's also the tipping point when everybody, non-homegrown, outperforms us. So then if you wanna look at the MPI score, where it takes everybody into consideration, not just the top two percent, you can see the homegrown is green, not have homegrown is the light blue, the district is red, and the state is purple. And so that's third, fourth, and fifth grades. You can see, third grade here, there's a difference of about thirty-four MPI points. The difference here is about thirty-nine, here is about thirty-eight. And then look at sixth grade, you have a difference of about thirty in sixth grade, about a difference of twenty here in seventh. And then here, they're pretty much the same. Questions about the homegrown data? Are you looking at math? So here, very similar slides. With math, as you recall, last year we started, we implemented a brand-new curriculum and philosophy for kindergarten through sixth grade, and we started working on our curriculum revision for seventh through twelfth grade, and we put a lot of focus and professional development into place. Math this year at secondary is implementing their new curriculum. And you'll see that we actually are pulling away from the state here. So that's, that was a nice thing to see after, after all of that hard work. And so here, it's almost twenty-two percent, or twenty-two points difference. And when you look at our percentage of top two, we start to pull away a little bit there as well. When you look at our district, our schools overall, while St. Charles High, I mentioned earlier, has saw improvement, they're still falling below the state, so that's an area of continued focus for them.
Do you remember what we were last year? Like, how improved are we from last year?
It was two...
It wasn't the two hundreds.
It was two...
It was like two twenties.
Yeah.
It was low.
We've had growth, we're just got, we got...
I don't, I don't have that with me at my fingertips, but that's something I can look up, and I can send it to you tomorrow.
I don't, yeah.
Uh, when you guys write that down, and then I'll make sure we do that.
Thank you.
Absolutely, 'cause that, 'cause they did see some strong growth.
And I, and I do wanna recognize that, right? I mean, yes, it's, it's...
Still not where we wanted, but...
Yeah, it's not where we wanted, and there will always be, not, I won't say there will always be. There will be continued comparisons between high and west. And, and yes, I would love to see that more equitable, but I don't wanna bury the improvement that, that was there.
And I will point out here too, one of the things next year you will see is that our eighth grade, our students who take algebra in eighth grade, two years ago, we switched where they, they, they can take the algebra one, or they can take the eighth-grade math. Two years ago, we switched them back to the eighth-grade math. So this spring, those kiddos will be taking algebra two at the high school level, and that will filter into their overall high school math scores. So I expect that at both high schools, we will see their overall math percentage jump next year because your high-flying math students will be back into their numbers. So I anticipate that next year will be a really good math year. Okay, so when we look at mathematics for just the state overall, again, comparing us to the state over the last five years, if you look at where we were five years ago in two thousand and fifteen to where we are now, that's, we're seeing strong growth of improvement, which is exciting. This is for our Caucasian students, and then I put this little box over here because over the last five years, the state actually declined by nearly three points where the district grew. So I think that that is really telling that as we're changing our instructional practices, we're seeing that growth. You can see that in two thousand and fifteen, we were actually a little bit below the state, and now we're pulling away. For our African-American students, this is very similar, as we said, for the ELA, up over ten percent outperforming the state, so that's exciting. For our Hispanic students, I put this up here too, because this for me was a wow number. Over the last five years, we grew by eighteen percent.
Could I ask you a question?
Uh-huh.
Is this like blacks compared to state blacks?
Yes.
Hispanics?
Yes.
Yes?
Same cohort.
Okay.
Across the state. So, so over our five-year growth, you'll see in two thousand and fifteen, we were kind of significantly below the state. But then you look to now, and we're outpacing the state. So here in two thousand and fifteen, we were negative sixteen point six below the state, and now we're outpacing. So that's, that's music, I mean. We revised our ELO for ELA, and we're doing different things, so we're starting, this is the, the payoff. With our grade-reduced lunch students, again, two thousand and fifteen, we were slightly below the state, and now we're outpacing. English language learners, I did this again, like, over the five years, we grew by almost nine percent where the state pretty much stayed stagnant. And then if you look at two thousand and fifteen, we were below the state by six point one, and now we're outpacing. For special education, the state actually declined over the five-year period, and we slightly grew, so that's a big thing. But then again, looking at where we were in two thousand and fifteen till now, we're, we're showing improvement. And it's the same types of things of just being intentional and focusing on our individual students, providing interventions, access to general ed curriculum, things like that. Questions about the math assessment for math? Now I wanna show you some homegrown data. So in this scenario, every single group of homegrown data kiddos outperformed non-homegrown. And some of them were very significant, in my opinion. In fourth grade, right here, you can see that for the percentage of proficient and advanced, they outperformed non-homegrown by about fifteen percent. And then also in seventh grade here, is another highlight, they outperformed again by almost another fifteen percent. So those are significant numbers. When you wanna look at Math Performance Index, I mean, these are huge, like, right here for fourth grade, that's a difference of almost seventy Math, in, Math Performance Index points. That's huge. Here we had in fifth grade, about fifty points difference. For sixth grade, we're sitting at about forty-five points difference. Seventh grade, about thirty-five points difference. And then in eighth grade, about ten, eleven first, or eleven point difference. And remember, eighth grade's the year that we now have more non-homegrown. Questions about that?
Uh, two eighty, it was two eighty-one.
Thank you.
I looked it up in my...
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can take that off the list and do it tomorrow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so for science, last year, we didn't have any scores because it was field-tested. This year, it's a new test, Desi says we cannot be here to previous years. And Desi did a lot of prep work in communicating with districts, saying, okay, science scores are coming, we wanna prep you, that across the state, science scores kind of took a nosedive. Because this new test was aligned to the next-generation science standards, which are new science standards, generally new science standards, that came out within recent years. We revised our science curriculum a couple of years ago, and we did align to the next-generation science standards. So I'm excited to say when we start looking at our achievements, while the test overall was much lower than previous years, we're outperforming the state by a higher rate than we had in the past. So that makes me happy.
Makes us all happy.
It does, it makes me happy. And so that was our math performance, and then this was looking at the students who are in the top, top two categories, advanced and proficient. And then here, if you wanna look across the district, science is only assessed in fifth grade, eighth grade, and biology at the high school level. And so you can see where our schools are falling out. And Jefferson is an area that we're gonna continue to work with. And since it's the fifth grade year, we also know that looking at elementary science feeds up into that. So that's an area that we'll continue to work in. So that's an area that, um, we'll continue working in. And then when you start looking at, um, our special programs here, so the district is blue, the state is red. I mean, this is, this is where I start saying some wow factors. So before, when I, we look at commerce and math for our African-American students, um, we were, we had a difference. But here with our MPI, this is almost a thirty-five point difference, which is huge. Our ELL students here, we have almost a forty-five point difference in how we're performing. Our IDP students, almost a twelve point difference. So, and you can see without exception for science, every single one of our disaggregated groups are outperforming the state. So then when we look at fifth grade, eighth grade, our biology, you can kinda see here where we're, where we're shaking out. Um, and biology here, uh, we're outperforming the state by a, almost eighteen points. So kudos to our bio teachers at the high school level. Then when we start looking at our five-year comparison for, um, science, this is for total population. And you can see here, we're outperforming the state about by three point six percent. Our Caucasian population about four point four percent. Our African-American about nine point eight. Hispanic, we're slightly below, um, but when you're looking at over the, over the last five years, kind of being right neck and neck with ours, with the state versus being significantly below, that's still true. At grade-reduced lunch, here you can also see again, over time, we went from being behind the state to being above the state. Our ELL students, our English language learners, over the last five years, we grew by almost ten percent. Over the five years, where the state, uh, grew by one point seven. And you can see here, two thousand fifteen, we were kinda neck and neck and now we're pulling ahead. Special ed, same type of thing. Over the five years, we grew by almost eleven points, the state grew by four point six. And when you see from two thousand fifteen till now, we're pulling ahead. Questions about science? Okay, this is gonna be the fastest part of this thing, social science, guess what, we have no choice. All right, so, um, last spring, we talked to you all a little bit about every student succeeds act. And so this is the new version of No Tell Behind that we all have heard in the past, right? So with ESSA, there are some federal requirements, um, in that, uh, act. And one of them is to id- for the state to identify targeted schools if populations of students fall at the bottom five percent across the state. So Missouri kind of went at this pretty quickly and they're now starting to make some comments that maybe they, um, went about this a week, in ways that maybe they wouldn't do now.
Just a, just a little bit.
For example, all of the school districts in St. Charles County were targeted for secondary schools for special ed performance. And you could have gotten on that list based upon your special ed graduation rate, your attendance rate, or your academic achievement. Three ways to get on the list, the only way to get off the list is by improving your academic achievement by some predetermined benchmarks that the state's come up with. Now the state is kinda saying like, oh, maybe we should, maybe we did that wrong because we looked at students against all students. So special ed students most likely are going to fall to the bottom five percent in many cases. But what they didn't do is they didn't rank order all special ed students and look at the five, the bottom five percent of all special ed students. Because if they did, our schools wouldn't have been on the list. So s- so the state's starting to have conversations of, well, we might have not done this appropriately. But regardless, we're on the list. So last year, the state came out in February and told, said, hey, um, your school's on the target list, but they didn't tell us for what or why. It wasn't until April that we actually had any numbers and we knew that it was special education. We had a meeting with our secondary principals, um, literally the week before math testing. And the state was saying that that was year one. And we have three years to show two years of improvement. So we have until twenty twenty-one to show two years of improvement, meaning the state benchmarks of four improvement. But last year was year one and we literally gave our schools one week's notice that they had to improve. So, that being said, I'm super excited to say that out of our three schools, Hardin, High and West, they had five, six areas that, um, they needed to show improvement. So it was, uh, communication arts and math for special ed groups, so that's six different groups for the three schools. Five of our six groups we met are s- the state benchmark for improvement, which is great because we didn't give them a whole lot of notice.
A great start.
And then, three of those five areas more than doubled the statewide benchmark for improvement. So the state is kinda saying now, well, if you more than doubled, then you might count that as you need with, for the entire duration. So Hardin more than doubled for their math. Special ed, High more than doubled for their math. Special ed and St. Charles West more than doubled for their English language arts special ed. And so that's exciting. The only area that did not improve the, um, statewide expectation was for St. Charles High for their communication arts for special ed. And if you remember what I mentioned earlier about their overall communication arts scores, they kinda dipped for the school as a whole. And so it's not surprising that special ed also dipped. So we've been meeting with our state supervisor and with the school administration and then through their school improvement process, they're identifying, um, a- activities and, um, goals that they're putting in place to work with, um, all of our, our, um, special ed students and meet there. So we're, we're happy to see that we've been doing it. Questions about ESSA? This is one of those areas that I feel like is a, it's a stay tuned area because this, there's a lot of question marks around this with the state. Um, and they're starting to have comments about this might change. So we'll see, we'll see what happens.
Lots of feedback from districts to the, to Desi about it, I'm sure.
Okay, who's excited? Second to last slide. Okay.
All right.
So this is, um, we've been doing a lot of things in the district on, what have we done to accelerate academic progress? I'm not going to read this whole list to you, but I'm gonna highlight a few things. First of all, we just rewrote our CCF and it's being implemented, right? So some of the things we saw here, we're already talking about RTI, we're already talking about data, we're already talking about putting together a graduation committee, we're talking about trauma and more. All of those things are already in here, um, that leads into the two big rocks, right? For the district that we've talked about. I've talked about school improvement plans and we're continuing to work with those. Um, we revised our K-12 math curriculum. Uh, K-6 implemented last year, seven to twelve implementing this year. Our ELA curriculum is now under revision. Uh, K-12 committee's kinda collaborating, K-6 is revising this year fully, seven to twelve will re- revise, revise fully next year. All of our schools are working in the Missouri Model Districts grants. They have additional funds to help support their PLC collaboration, their data teams, um, doing the, the good work of the, of the schools. The things that you guys mentioned about seeing when you did our school visits of like the data, that, that, that proc- process is helping support that in all of our schools. Special ed interventions that Julie's been working with and making sure that, um, students are accessing genite curriculum. Um, I have to give a shout-out, I know we've had instructional coaches for a while, but they make the magic happen at the schools. They do. And so they are helping lead initiatives and embedded professional development. And, um, then that leads me to the people in the instruction, curriculum and instruction department. So they haven't been with us very long and they've made a huge impact. Um, the things that we're able to do now with our curriculum revision processes from the professional development to leading through that process, it has truly transformed what we're able to do in the district because of their hard work. Um, and then of course, you know, you know that we focus on professional development and making pe- making sure people feel supported. So those are a few of the things that I would like to highlight out of there, but a lot of great things are happening. And with that, I think I may answer your questions.
Very informative.
Yes. Good report, Danielle. The, the work is, is outstanding, so, great job.
It'll be interesting to see if you can come back next year and tell us about the homegrown group and how they've improved, or at least a couple years from now.
I think that that data is really important because I feel like sometimes when our, when our scores come out and we are compared to people who are in our county, right? But our demographics are very, very different, our needs are very, very different. And sometimes we pick ourselves because we're like, man, we're doing all the right things. We're doing the same things everybody else is doing, like we're, we're intentional, we're research-based, we're focused. Like we have the best PD around, like we have all of these things, like why is it translating? And so I just wanted to take some time and do that research because it matters. The longer the kids are with us, the better they do. And I could put our scores for our homegrown students up against anybody because we're doing the work, we're doing the great things with our kids. And when you're in our schools, you see it happen.
I'll put our practices up against it.
Absolutely.
And I, and I think the intentional focus is the key, we're more intentional than ever. So, in uniform.
So I think that that's a piece that I wanna make sure our teachers hear too because they need to feel uplifted when they, when they look at our data.
My other thought is, um, my other thought, when I look at my notes when I'm over this first one, I would like to resolve the issue between the difference between St. Charles High and St. Charles West. And I'd like it to make it something more than demographics. I would like to address why we're not doing that. You know, if it means we have to spend more money on High as opposed to West, for whatever reasons, then I think we should look at that. Because, um, you know, I, I don't think we can blame demographics.
Well, I'd be interested, you know, you mentioned kind of restarting the PLC community too. You know, if we can get the two groups working together. Yeah, please. I told you, I told you I was gonna get you talking.
And you're seeing more and more of that. I mean, that's, that's, that's the whole SCS United piece, and I'll let Jessica talk about it just a second. But we're talking both high schools working hand in hand, so you're gonna see some things.
So, you're right. Um, they are working more together now and you are going to see more and more of that. Um, in regards to the PLT, well, they have PLTs at the high schools, professional learning teams. And Dr. Vocals spoke about the SLC, this, the, um, uh, the shared leadership committee. That shared leadership committee for both high schools helps, is, they're teacher-led and they help to facilitate what is happening in those particular schools. They then come together, both high schools, and they work together to say, okay, what are we doing best for our students across the board, High or West, success campus included in that as well? And making sure that every student is getting everything they need and they are all being exposed to the same curriculum across the board. We're doing that very strategically and very specifically, meeting with those teachers on early out Wednesdays, you know, vertically, so I mean, excuse me, horizontally, West and High. And those teachers are working together, okay, are we assessing the students on the same thing? What are the results of those, those assessments? How are we going to provide targeted interventions for those students who are not exactly hitting the mark, um, on every single standard? And what are we gonna do to, to support those students who are and they need more encouragement? They need, um, to be able to be propelled to advancement in that area. That is happening, those conversations are happening right now. And I think we would be open to you coming and seeing that too because, and to witness that. Those conversations are happening on a consistent basis. We just met, um, we, the, the administration from both high schools and myself met for the past two weeks with the, um, English language arts professional learning teams who met together from High and West to discuss, okay, let's look and reevaluate, um, the standards that we are teaching our students and are we really hitting the mark on those? And so we pulled apart all of the data from the AOC from the last few years for English language arts, put it up on the board for the teachers to see, see what the areas of strengths for the students are and the areas that are, need the most growth. Together, High and West looked at that and said, okay, this is what we as a team are gonna tackle in English one to make sure that the students are prepared in English two when they do take that AOC to be very successful. I agree with you. This is something that it, that needs further support and further enhancement and it's going to take time, but the process and the structures are, are in place and they are working together side by side, those conversations are happening. I'm speaking with both of, um, administration at both high schools as well, as well as success campus. And they are working as a team. They, and it's going to take time, as I said before, but it will happen.
And that's where the SCS United plan started to come into fruition. It's not just, oh, a slogan, it's truly working and guaranteeing that all of our students across the district, it's two schools, six schools, whatever it is at each level, that all of our kids are gonna get exactly what we're guaranteeing.
Well, my hat goes off to you, it's tremendous effort, uh, and I wouldn't know where to begin. So congratulations to you all for doing it.
Thank you.
We are for sure doing the right work.
I think you're doing the, the right work. My, my only defensive comment about this difference in the two schools, we've already said as a district, compared to other districts in the county, our demographics do come into play. There's no denying the demographics that say, you, you, I know you say, well, putting that aside, you can't put, you can't put it aside. It, it does have some difference and it's good...
Demographics matter a lot.
It does make a difference, it doesn't mean that that's an excuse. So I think that combined, uh, sharing of ideas and combined, uh, innovative ideas and practice, that, that...
And learning from those ninety, ninety, ninety schools as well. What are they doing right that we can duplicate?
Right.
I, I wanna go back to like the very beginning, um, and the fact that color-coded blue because Missouri wants to be in the top ten in the country. Charles, tell me if I'm wrong here, but doesn't Missouri, aren't we ranked like forty-eighth in spending? But yet they wanna be the top ten in the nation?
Yes, so we're, we're ranked...
Do they not get the correlation though?
Well, right, and, and there isn't a, uh, a hard and fast correlation, but yes, that, that is absolutely an issue. We're ranked, uh, forty-sixth or seventh in overall spending. We're one of the very lowest states in state support for public education. Uh, very highly tilted towards local, which we've talked about before as well.
It just, it, it, it makes me wonder when they say that and they put these expectations on us, if they...
Yep, that's the challenge from the governor is to become thirtieth in teacher salaries, but there's no state money to back up that challenge at all.
Right.
I vote for Josh for governor, all of you favor him?
Oh, no, thank you.
All right. Um, well, just, yeah, I mean, yeah, just the fact that target means if, if we're in target, then we're, we're helping the state get into the top ten.
Unfortunately, it's what the public sees.
And so they're not putting points or percentages on to this. I have been at a couple of meetings and so has Dr. Seifert. Seifert's been there.
I was one, at, at one today.
That, um, other area superintendents are saying, if they are all green and blue, that they've earned one hundred percent of their points on the ADR. So just so you know, we're all green.
Well, thank you, um, yeah, thank you, Danielle, thank you, Nicole and Jessica. Appreciate everything that you do for us. We do need a motion, please.
I need to approve the student achievement program review that's presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Have a good evening ladies.
Bye.
And I think Charles already gave us the summary.
Yes, so from colors to numbers, here's the very quick summary. I'll answer any questions you have, but, um, I'll try and make this quick for you. We are at, uh, almost two point eight million dollars in the healthcare trust. Just as a side note, we are almost finished with open enrollment that will close this week for all of our current employees and retirees that are on our, uh, plan. Month in for October, you can see we continue our normal trend down. Uh, we started the month with two point eight, two point nine, or twenty-eight point nine million dollars, ended the month at, uh, twenty-four million, really, uh, about twenty-one point two if you take out the self, uh, insurance trust there. I did highlight county revenue and this is very odd to me, uh, and so I've asked Diane to go back and do a little more work, but, um, this county revenue, uh, stream, I think is miscoded. Uh, typically, we would see, uh, fines and forfeitures coming in one lump sum and, um, state assessed railroads and utilities come in in one lump sum. County, um, fines last year were about seventy-five thousand dollars. Prior to that, they always ran about a hundred and fifty. So it's possible that this is, um, fines and forfeitures and not, um, what we have it coded as is, um, state assessed roads and utilities, but that, state assessed roads and utilities ought to be about a million bucks, not forty-three thousand. So I think we've just miscoded where it came from. So I think we've just miscoded where it came from. Um, but we're going to check, double-check that out. And then if you look at the year-end, the next slide down, you can see we started the year at forty-five point six million. Um, I highlighted, um, three numbers in, uh, the middle section there. We've spent, um, of that, of that thirty point five million dollars that we've spent since July one, um, twenty-four million of it is either in our staff or in our construction projects. So six million dollars roughly on everything else, uh, if you want to look at things that way. And then the budget adjustment report, uh, shows we're going to roughly roll in at about seventeen and a half million dollars in operating balances, which if that's accurate, that equate to about a twenty-two point one-three percent fund balance. I would suspect we'll see that number drop just a little bit more. But if you remember, the ASBR, uh, number always comes in just slightly higher because of some differences in when accounting, uh, things are put on the books. So, um, we'll, we'll, we'll see what we end up with, but that's where I think we're going to be.
Any questions? Do we need a motion?
I move to approve the financial report that's presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I move that we adjourn.
My second.
All in favor?
Thank you. I'm all in favor.
Thank you.
All in favor.